Called order of the September twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two Palatine County Board of Supervisors meeting. Mr. Williams would lead the Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. McClung would lead us in the indication. I'd appreciate it.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, thank you. It was just beautiful day in Palatine. Be with us tonight as we do the work of the people. Thank you. Amen.
Amen. Okay. We have any requests, postponed agenda items, additions, deletions, changes in the order of presentation? I got an email from Mr. Cox today. He would like to move eight C and eight D off of the consent agenda.
That's correct, sir.
And I also got an email from Mr. Williams. He would like to take eight B off the consent agenda. Is that correct, Mr. Williams?
Nope.
You want to leave eight B on?
No, um, I'm sorry. My mistake. Uh, yes, you were correct.
August twenty-second.
You are.
Meeting minutes?
Yes.
Okay. And we will move those three items to thirteen A, B, and C, or thirteen A and B, thirteen and then A and B. And we'll do them in the same order. Thirteen will be the minutes. Thirteen A will be Resolution R twenty-two twenty-eight. Thirteen B will be Resolution R twenty-two dash twenty-nine. Need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I want to discuss this.
Okay.
I'm looking at the agenda and I don't need to discuss that. I'm sorry.
You're good?
I'm good.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
You've moved those to thirteen A, B, and D. Is that going to be before the public comment or after?
Yes, yeah, before. Yeah, thirteen A, thirteen, and then thirteen A and thirteen B. And they will be before the public comment period. Public comment period will be fourteen. By the way, if citizens want to speak on it, they more than welcome to. So let's do that approval of the agenda.
Amen.
amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Or she cares. County Administrator update.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we had three proclamation tonight and a couple of updates for you. I'd like to start off first with a good, some good news in general. We've got, there's an update. Every year, our constitutional officers, our treasurer, and our commissioner of revenue, and a sheriff are audited independently to confirm accountability over collections, internal controls, and code compliance. On August twenty-fourth, the Auditor of Public Accounts issued a letter of compliance. These tasks are difficult processes, and they got a good report from the Auditor of Public Accounts for all three constitutional officers. So big congratulations go out to Treasurer Nunley, Commissioner of Revenue Timbalake, and Sheriff Nunley and their staff. Good job, everybody. We always like hearing good news when we get it. Also, our clerk of the court is audited by another independent auditor, Robinson Farmer and Cox, and they also got their great report back for year in June thirty of two thousand twenty-two. August twenty-fifth, he got the letter. Clerk of the Court Dobbins received the good news from her auditor and a big congratulations to Ms. Dobbins and her staff. And last piece of good news on that end is, last but not least, on September twelfth, our finance team received the good news that the recently adopted budget document received the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting, the Government Finance Officer's Distinguished Budget Award. Congratulations to our finance team, including Director of Finance Charlotte Schubert, Budget Manager Tommy Boe, and Accountant Carrie Delaney. Great work, team. With that, Mr. Chairman, we've got three proclamation tonight. The first proclamation is recognizing the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of Mount Zion Baptist Church. You would lead us on that one.
Yes, sir. This is a proclamation recognizing the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Mount Zion Baptist Church from Palatine County. Whereas, after the emancipation proclamation, a group of formerly enslaved Christians desired to have a place of their own to worship. And whereas, the method of transportation in those days prevented residents of the Smith Cross Road community from traveling great distances to worship. Prayer meetings were held in small groups to make religious services available. And whereas, these praying Christians established Mount Zion Baptist Church in eighteen seventy-two. And whereas, early founders were brothers Henry Brown, Isaac Braxton, Sam Braxton, Stephen Brown, Frank Falcon, Hennable Lee, A.D. Hewitt, and T.G. Hewitt. Sisters Fanny Brown, Sarah Jackson, Nancy Lee, Rebecca Pittman, Ann Mosby, and Edith Howe. And whereas, the site for the new church was given by the brother Pembroke Mosby, with Reverend Alfred Morris was the first elected pastor of Mount Zion Baptist Church. And whereas, by nineteen thirty-nine, the congregation had outgrown the one-room church built in eighteen seventy-two. And at a church meeting, a motion was made by J.P. Bell and Carrie to build a new church. And whereas, the church members began to raise money to build the church, the members preserved and over time raised enough money to build a new church and after eleven years successfully dedicated new structure on the second Sunday in March nineteen fifty. And whereas, Mount Zion has had the leadership of fifteen duly-elected pastors over its past one hundred and fifty years. And whereas, through strong leadership, the pastor, deacons, trustees, and members enabled Mount Zion to build an additional, or in addition to the nineteen fifty structure, which was completed in nineteen ninety-nine. And whereas, Mount Zion has remained steadfast and a beacon to those in the community desiring a place of worship. And whereas, Mount Zion Baptist Church has been an integral part of the Palatine community for one hundred and fifty years, serving as a polling place for the Smith Crossroads District, support for community food banks, and the Christmas Mother Program, helped fill a freight car with donations to tornado victims in Kentucky, Arkansas, and Tennessee, annually supports Autism Speaks, American Cancer Society Habitat for Humanity, is a participating member of the Palatine Coalition of Churches and the Palatine Free Clinic. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Palatine County Board of Supervisors does honor and celebrate the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Mount Zion Baptist Church and its many contributions to the citizens of Palatine County. Thank you and congratulations to the Mount Zion Baptist Church. Thank you very much.
Yeah, if you would, if you're here from Mount Zion, we'd like you to come to the front and we'll present you with a proclamation. Thank you. Welcome. Thank you.
Want to take the opportunity just to address you all and, and thank you so very much for recognizing us tonight. I am Pastor Brian Stevens, the fifteenth pastor of Mount Zion Baptist Church. Know quite a few of you on the board. I'm your neighbor, Brother Byerly. To God, I give the glory for it. And it's the first time that I'm standing here just to thank you in, in public. Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Absolutely.
Our second proclamation tonight is proclamation two thousand twenty-two dash oh nine, recognizing Fire Prevention Week. Chief Warner and Taylor, if you're not good, you're welcome to come down and Mr. Chairman, I was going to read your resolution. Thank you.
Yeah. Good evening, board. This proclamation recognizing Fire Prevention Week. So it goes, whereas the county of Palatine is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in or visiting our county. And whereas, fire is a serious public safety, both locally and nationally, and homes at the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire. Whereas, home fires caused two thousand two hundred and sixty-five civilian deaths in the United States in two thousand twenty-one. According to the United States Fire Administration and fire departments in the United States responded to three hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred home fires. And whereas, smoke alarms send smoke well before you can, alerting you to the danger. In the event of a fire, you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying and reported home fires in half. And whereas, Palatine residents should be sure everyone in the home has a fake, a fire escape plan and are prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, Palatine residents will make sure their smoke alarms and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas, Palatine firefighters are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, Palatine residents, the responsive to public education measures, are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas, the two thousand twenty-two Fire Prevention Week theme, Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape, serves to remind Palatine residents and visitors it is important to have a home fire escape plan. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Supervisors of Palatine County, the week of October ninth or fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two is Fire Prevention Week throughout Palatine County. We urge all people of Palatine to plan and practice a home fire escape for Fire Prevention Week two thousand twenty-two, also to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Palatine Fire and Rescue Department, whose diligence and professionalism keeps our county and citizens safe.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, our next proclamation is proclamation P dash twenty twenty-two dash ten, recognizing Suicide Prevention Month and honoring the lives lost by suicides. Mr. Karen Carmack, our vice chairman, will lead us through that proclamation.
Okay. As my family and many others in Palatine County have been affected recently by suicide, this proclamation holds a special meaning. Whereas, suicide remains the tenth-leading cause of death in the United States and the second-leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of ten and thirty-four. And whereas, September is globally, is known globally as Suicide Prevention Month to raise the visibility of the mental health resources and suicide prevention services available in our community. The goal is to start the conversation about mental health and the impact of suicide to help de-stigmatize the conversation, help and help connect people with the appropriate support services. And whereas, more than forty-eight thousand people died by suicide across the United States each year with an average of one hundred thirty-two suicides completed daily. And whereas, over ninety percent of people who die by suicide have a diagnosable and treatable mental health condition, although often that condition is not recognized or treated. And whereas, each and every suicide directly impacts a minimum of a hundred additional people, including family, friends, coworkers, neighbors, and community members. And whereas, we encourage all residents to take the time to understand the importance of mental health education and recognize that taking care of ourselves and others includes taking care of mental health. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed that Palatine County Board of Supervisors does hereby declare September as Suicide Prevention Month. And be it further proclaimed that Palatine County Board of Supervisors does hereby honor those lives of persons we've lost to suicide.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman Carmack. Our last topic on the, on the County Administrator update, I've got a few comments for you, the board tonight. Tonight's agenda has numerous topics of interest, including a highly debated discussion on the Paying Class Plan, one of two items requested by Mr. Williams for tonight's agenda. We have already received a lot of details in advance of tonight's meeting on the Paying Class Plan discussion, but we're only guessing what additional, additional gotcha moments Mr. Williams is playing for the Social Services Agenda item. Ever since late two thousand twenty-one, staff and the other three board members have witnessed a series of attempted gotcha moments from Mr. Williams and Mr. Cox, most of which are presented to the public in a one-sided blitz without a chance for staff counterpoints or explanations. But happily, last week's board workshop was a great week for staff and for myself. A beautiful high-five moment. At the end of the discussion of the Fire Station Number One Edition, a forty-minute tirade began claiming that I, as county administrator, had shifted a million dollars from the fire station budget and used it elsewhere inappropriately without authorization. After a few assurances by the county administrator that the money had been reassigned by the Board of Supervisors, Supervisors Cox and Williams demanded an audit of the CIP funding. Staff knew that processes were in place to manage the funding of CIP projects, but the unanticipated gotcha moment caught us off guard. We simply had to promise and answer to the two-year-old budget gotcha moment at the, excuse me, at the next board meeting. But before the two board members could end the discussion and leave taxpayers thinking that staff and I had misappropriated a million dollars, we were able to find a presentation where the board reduced the Fire Station Number One budget by a million as part of the fiscal year twenty-two budget discussions, and we were able to illustrate the eighteen-month-old presentation to the public. Wow. If we hadn't have found the proof of the reallocation of the million dollars, our citizens would have left the meeting thinking that I, possibly staff, were not professionally managing the county's financials, a task in which we continue to receive awards for. Recently received a Government Finance Officer Association Award, as you just heard, for excellence with our fiscal year twenty-three budget. This is not only the case, this is not the only case in which facts have been misstated simply to create a gotcha moment. But what do you do? One of the two gotcha supervisors has already been censored for lying, so there's no discipline left for behavior like this. We may have three more gotcha moments being attempted tonight as a mystery social services topic and the Keystone topic are on the agenda, along with the paying class compensation discussion. As part of your agenda packet, you will see fourteen, a fourteen-page report written by our county attorney and a correspondent response by the county administrator addressing some of the issues. We contacted the Virginia Institute of Government called VIG for some help in this topic, as I knew that well-managed counties had delegated pay-in-class management to the county administrator, but I didn't have the data to support it. VIG was more than happy to conduct a survey for us and try and determine if our actions with the Paying Class Plan are actually a problem for other counties or simply just a very stringent viewpoint by our county attorney and another attempt by Mr. Cox and Mr. Williams to discredit the county administrator and staff. Virginia Institute of Government received nine survey results back for the question, and I quote, "Is your county administrator authorized to make salary, grade, and position title changes during the fiscal year?" end quote. Six of the nine respondents answered in the positive. Now, have these localities, all of which are under the county administrative form of government, like we are, have they been able to take these, have they been able to take these personal actions under state law? Excuse me, have they been able to make those personnel decisions under state law? Question mark. I am sure that one thing happened. They all had county attorneys who at some time worked with staff to make operations efficient and to make sure authority was delegated to staff as needed. Two months before Palatine adopted the Chondry Pay Study in two thousand fifteen, our Board of Supervisors adopted a resolution, which has been on our website since then, since two thousand fifteen has been on our site, and it's called the Delegation of Authority, also referred to as a Resolution to Establish Authority of the Palatine County Administrator. This is a resolution, along with many future board adopted resolutions, makes a great case for anyone reviewing our practices to at least see a common thread of delegation to the county administrator for these types of personnel decisions. Post-two thousand fifteen resolutions include the Employee Handbook, which states, and I quote, "Human Resources, under the direction of the county administrator, is responsible for administration and maintenance of the classification and compensation plan," end quotes. That's in our employee handbook. And numerous budget resolutions approved annually that state, again, I quote, "The county administrator is authorized to make changes to grades, titles, and classifications as necessary to carry out the board's direction." Now, what does board's direction mean? Could it be the approved budget that they just got through working on? Possibly the strategic plan that was adopted a year ago? Could it be the county administrator's job description, which details, talks about the delegation of authority? Or does it just mean that the Board of Supervisors wants to approve every change made to personnel within the county, as indicated by the county attorney? Is there any other code Virginia language that the other localities are relying on that is not being considered? How is it okay for most of our VIG survey respondents to manage paying class issues at the county administrator level, and we get a fourteen-page document telling us it can't be done? We obviously need a second opinion on the topic because everybody can't be wrong. Everybody can't be wrong. This newest gotcha moment impacts staff morale significantly. We are only months after the Board of Supervisors invested four hundred thousand dollars addressing problems of compression and fine-tuning seven years of staffing changes made within our existing Paying Class Plan. The investment in solving our compression issues impacted forty-nine percent of our employees, forty-nine percent, including any compressed staff of our constitutional officers and our general government staff. The remaining fifty-one percent was not deemed to be compressed. So what does, what does staff hear from these discussions? What are they talking about in the hallways? That the raises were not deserved, or possibly that they had to give the money back? How is that for staff morale? We have been able to fix a lot of problems with the compression adjustments, plus the strategic adjustments made. And we fully include, excuse me, I said that, I apologize. Again, we worked closely with the constitutional officers, and we had found equitable financial solutions to staffing issues within their offices, all with a focus on the existing but dated Paying Class Plan. After a consult with an outside attorney with significant experience involving constitutional officers' pay, we do recognize, and I emphasize "do", that additional delegation of, of authority language is needed for any changes in pay for constitutional officer staff. We recognize that that has not been delegated, and we need, we need additional language towards that. Until this discussion, to the best of my knowledge, we have never been advised of this by a county attorney, and we would like to bring additional resolution forward using, utilizing suggested language recommended in the second council opinion that the board may, and I hope they do, engage. I suggest this can be accomplished with a simple update to the already adopted Delegation of Authority, which is Resolution two thousand fifteen dash thirty-one. In addition to the delegation clarification, I am suggesting quarterly staffing updates to the Board of Supervisors and a limit on the percentage amount of pay adjustments that can be delegated to the county administrator. In my opinion, all areas of Palatine's government are working together with the, with the exception of our two gotcha moment supervisors and the independent contractor county attorney. We want to do things right, just like our fellow counties in the Commonwealth. We just need a legal teammate who stares us in the right direction as needed and is strong enough to recognize politically motivated gotcha moments versus the will of the majority of this and arguably prior Boards of Supervisors. Let's talk briefly about the Paying Class Plan from two thousand fifteen. Our Board of Supervisors, at that time, did not have the advantage of having a ten-year financial plan that could help them understand the affordability of the Chondry Pay Plan. As a result, I know that every staff member who worked with us then, plus our constitutional officers, recognize that the plan was not funded at market levels, and we have lived with it every day since. We appreciate the board's efforts this year supporting and investing in compression. We have managed to move forward and maintain a high level of customer service reacting to paying class issues as needed, all within what is believed to be the authority delegated to the county administrator as is standard procedure for well-managed counties. Mr. Chairman, at previous Board of Supervisors meetings, we have discussed board member interference with county staff and the impact that it has on productivity. Our bylaws state in Section twelve, and I quote, "The county administrator has been delegated the task of managing and supervising county personnel. The individual board members are therefore encouraged to avoid making any requests to perform staff or providing any instructions to county staff directly, but should instead make all requests to the county administrator," end quotes. In my opinion, board member David Williams has always been a challenge for staff as his bullying techniques step across the line from time to time. We have numerous intimidating comments and cursing to staff members from Mr. Williams, and the bullying has got to stop. I am not sure how to protect staff in the future, short of enforcing the county bylaws, which is very unfortunate, as is unfair to board members who are respectful, appreciative, and polite to staff, such as Mr. Byerly, Ms. Carmack, and Mr. McClung. In the near future, I will be forced to develop a policy designed to address Mr. Williams' bullying issue. In conclusion, who knows what other gotcha moment materials will occur tonight? Will social services receive a surprise attack? Or will Keystone, the Keystone Project, get the assault? Team Palatine continues to move forward. We will defend ourselves when we have the opportunity, but sometimes you just can't anticipate how far someone will go to discredit staff as evidenced by the million-dollar CIP accusation, accusation dispelled just last Tuesday night. In the recent past, Mr. Cox has reached out directly to our external auditors, looking for help, hoping to uncover financial wrongdoings. What an insult to our excellent Department of Finance, who work closely with auditors on an annual basis and detailed reviews of our operations. I came to Palatine to join a great staff and to help enhance the daily operations and provide financial guidance to the future. I was told on December fourteenth in a four-hour marathon lecture from Bill Cox that, and I quote, "Ned, you spend too much time worrying about the image of the board. I don't give a damn about our image," end quote. He was right. Many of the visitors here tonight and online have not heard the entire story. I thought it'd be helpful for you to understand both sides of the issue. Sorry for the long presentation, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Next up is the public comment period. The floor is open for anyone from the public to come down and speak to the board. You have three minutes if you're an individual. You have up to five minutes if you're representing a group. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Mike Hall. I live at seventeen forty-six Old Palatine Estates. Thank you for your, your comments, Mr. Smithers. That was, that was interesting. But I just want to come express some of my thoughts, all right, to be, to be considered. Quite frankly, I'm astounded and shocked by the salary increases that, that recently were exposed in what I've read in the emails and the articles. Some of them as much as forty-some odd percent. There's nothing wrong with salary increases, certainly when merited, per se. Everyone deserves to, to, to make a reasonable salary and to be paid accordingly based on their job. And there's, there's nothing wrong with salary increases, but the process is the question here. So the processes used by you seems to be nothing but arbitrary and capricious, in my opinion. As a former state employee, for thirty years, with extensive experience in HR matters, all right, I was never aware of individuals getting a fixed amount of pay increase without some type of I was never aware of individuals getting a fixed amount of pay increase without some type of quid pro quo. Usually that has to do with either a change, an offer from another employer and you, you, you present that to your boss to say that you have, you've got an offer from another employer. For tent, for retention purposes, you can negotiate a pay increase. Or there's a change in their position or reclassification of their position and their duties. There's, there's a quid pro quo. And I'm not, I'm not sure I'm seeing, I don't, I don't see any quid, quid pro quo here, right? County employees are treated much like state employees, all right? They're given the same benefits with the Virginia retirement system. So did these individuals show that they had a competitive offer from another county or an employer? Did, does the, did the county HR do a study of comparable positions in counties similar in size and density of Powhatan? I didn't read any of that that was done. Were other county employees offered raises as well? Or is it just these individuals that I've read about? You know, if anything, it should be across the board and in my, my opinion. Generally, state and county employees across the board are granted a two and a half, a three or five percent increase maybe when the coffers have that kind of money. Remember salaries are calculated and applied to all the benefits included in the, included in their VRS payments and reimbursements in the future. So has that been calculated? Has that been thought of? In my old, my old position, when I smell something wrong, usually there's something up. And I smell something in the air. And I'm surprised that the Richmond Times-Dispatch or the Virginia Attorney General has not yet picked up on this and, and I suspect that they might. When I was with the state, it was said that even implied impropriety is something to shy away from.
Can we wrap it up, Mr. Hall?
And this is an implied impropriety. And it may be cause for some serious ramifications if actions are not taken to correct this. So I urge the board to look deeply into this issue and take action to make this right. And thank you very much for your consideration.
Sally Bays, 476 Bell Bridge Circle. Good evening, members of the board. My comments tonight focus on the Powhatan County Administrator's mismanagement of the county's pay and class plan and the numerous and very serious concerns related to that as outlined in the county attorney's memorandum to the board. First, I wish to thank Mr. Latchney for his thorough explication of the issues and for his detailed rebuttal to the county administrator's response. Thank you also to the board for airing these issues in a public forum. What has been described to all of us in these documents is a stunning revelation of incompetent leadership and abject failure to follow the rules and law on the part of the Powhatan County Administrator. The memorandum states unequivocally that state law was violated and that the county administrator made numerous decisions for which he lacked legal authority. Of all the qualities needed for citizens to have trust and confidence in their government, both the rationale and implementation of decisions made must be ethical at the core. Ethical judgments rise to an even higher level of importance when people's livelihoods are at stake. Attracting and retaining good employees is key to providing high-quality service to the taxpayers. But how can the county meet these goals if its employers, employees are not treated equitably? Not only does such treatment ruin morale, it increases the county's potential liability. Mismatches between skill sets and job descriptions, employee turnover, and possible lawsuits are all hidden costs to the taxpayer. But having to start over unnecessarily with the creation of a new pay and class plan may cost the county, that is, the taxpayers, hundreds of thousands of dollars. The evidence in this memorandum that taxpayer money is being mishandled is overwhelming. The description of quote integrity being irreparably compromised resonates throughout this report. I urge the board to take action immediately with regard to the county administrator. Inaction would be so egregious that the integrity of the board itself would be brought into question. I ask you to restore our faith and pride in Powhatan County. Take steps immediately to address these systemic issues and to right these wrongs. Thank you for hearing my plea this evening.
Chris Copeland, 2200 Cedarwood Road, Powhatan District 1. After what I've heard tonight from Mr. Smithers has probably only sent me a little bit more down a path. I'm here tonight to express my disgust with the behavior of the county administrator. I've read the county attorney's report on the integrity of pay and class dated 9/16 as well as the point counterpoint with Mr. Smither, Smithor of September 22nd. And then again, your rebuttal of tonight. When I first heard about these issues, I thought it may be that the county administrator was ignorant of policies and procedures as it relates to what was required and not required as far as the things that are required to be approved by the board of supervisors. But after reading your two documents mentioned, frankly, I don't think it can be anything but a boring disregard for the authority and the power vested in the board of supervisors by the taxpayers of the county of Powhatan. With the blatant disregard for procedure as noted in the county attorney's report, he has impacted 20% of the county positions violated state law and has ignored procedure and having such changes and modifications to the county positions and salary approved by the board of supervisors. I would ask that the board of supervisors do no less than terminate the county administrator for cause. If this comes to a vote, I ask that those of you who vote against his termination, explain to the voters in the county why you chose to vote that way, something that was not done after the last vote asking for the county attorney's administration, county administrator's administration. Thank you for your time.
Rox Bradbury Smith, 3548 Richards Run. Good evening. I come to you tonight with several verbal FOIA requests. I will attach these in writing to the chairman at the conclusion of this meeting. One, the full total dollar amount of all raises approved by the county administrator during his tenure that have occurred outside of the published budget process and have not had board approval. Two, the total surplus revenue received in fiscal years 2020, 2021, and to date 2022, and an explanation as to how these funds were dispersed and if any attempt was made to include the public in those decisions around where the money would go. And finally, an answer from each of you on when we as your constituents can plan on having a district town hall level meeting to facilitate some much-needed open dialogue. You all ran less than three years ago and I'm quoting your own campaign documents with promises of Powhatan values, transparent cohesive leadership, open collaborative communication to restore fiscal responsibility, to accelerate economic development and to support the needs of the education system and to conservatively manage taxes and budget all while doing quote unquote what is best for Powhatan. Today, I stand before you as an employee of this county, resident, taxpayer, and lifelong citizen to tell you I feel cheated and lied to. One of you several years back frequently quoted the phrase "one team" in budget meetings and significant strides were made to have all jobs and pay descriptions and employee benefits match across all county employees. And the past three years under your leadership, many of us have seen our retirement benefits cut, insurance raises increase, and the gap in benefits, benefits between school and county employees widen. After 29 years of service to this county this year, I had to reduce my family's insurance coverage in order to afford it and not pay $16,000 for health insurance. You've spent time advocating for the micromanagement of our schools and professional developments and gone so far as to self-present and interpret materials from these to suggest that we as teachers are teaching in a way that harms our students with zero specific reference or example of any such behavior. Perhaps your hypocrisy and lack of fiduciary oversight needs a bit more attention than my teaching. Amongst you, you advocate safe turn lanes on Route 60 businesses while owning Route 60 businesses with no turn lanes. You vote against single cut and flag lot exemptions while several of you live on flag lots. You want transparency in our teaching materials and school spending while categorically refusing to answer numerous FOIA requests for where $10.6 million in surplus tax revenue was spent. And evidently you have allowed a rogue county administrator to spend untold tax dollars to create a haves and have-not structure among county employee where these employees cannot speak out for fear of their job and you've approved spending unnecessary amounts of money in a completely dysfunctional assessor's office. And the greatest investment of your energy this past year has seemingly been over an argument of $50,000 for our Christmas tree park. Your lack of leadership and transparency has left me and many, many taxpaying school county employees who live here far worse off. I hope tonight you will find yourself rectifying some of this by demanding a study of changes across all administrative pay scales on both sides and a vote of no confidence in this county administrator. Yes, I will. Your games and a pursuit of distrust between all of the boards have resulted in dramatic turnovers and clearly is an example of how dysfunctioning this board is. Thank you.
Terry Attac, 5719 Carter School Road, District 5. I read the county attorney's report. I think it's in the best interest of Powhatan County that Mr. Smithers, Powhatan County's administrator resigns at this time. Short and sweet. Thank you.
Fran Carlton, 2219 Lawson Road, Powhatan, District 4. Mr. Smith, I think you misspoke, but I'm not sure because you spoke so quickly. But I think you really meant to say that you have the power to delegate as an authority on personnel decisions. Because you do not govern Powhatan County. Maybe in some cities or counties, the county administrator, administrator runs the government with the approval of their boards. But in Powhatan County, the board of supervisors govern this county. Not the county administrator, but the board of supervisors. Because we elected the board of supervisors. You were not elected by the people of Powhatan County. You were appointed, but you were not elected. This board was elected. I will say, thank you, Mr. Latchey, for your good job and hard work on the report. And thank you, Mr. Cox and Mr. Williams for taking the brunt of bullying by Mr. Smith. Thank you.
Steven Barham, 3492 Richards Run, Powhatan, Virginia, District 3. I have to give Mr. Smithers one thing. He did something tonight, the football coach I had, God bless old Coach Roke. He says, "Your defense ain't worth a darn going to offense." I give you credit. You did a great job, Mr. Smith. Sad, but great. This thing right here, it's 14-page report. Me and Mr. Lackney haven't always agreed. I disagree more with him after reading that. I'll tell you one thing, if the state law has been violated, which it sounds like it probably has, you five up here are responsible and you're involved with it. If you don't take care of this problem, y'all gonna be right wrapped up with it. Soon as late, somebody's gonna call the state police or attorney general. It's coming. People are sick and tired of what's going on here. I mean, what I witnessed tonight from the county administrator, I know I'm vicious. I know I can attack like a dog. What I saw tonight was embarrassing. You talking about, you said that little coffee thing you had last week? Where, where are the minutes from that? That was a county thing, but I guarantee we don't have any. And you talked about how the board, oh, it's terrible, it's horrible how they act. What I saw tonight was worse and embarrassing. It was disgusting. I mean, I can't believe this. And then you talk about, you come to Powhatan County to help this county. Well, why don't you come live here? The board gives you $190,000, give you a raise after what you've done to this county. Three of you did. I can't believe it. $190,000 to run this county. It is unbelievable. Y'all have got the answer to the people of this county. Mr. Cox, Mr. Williams, thank you for what y'all doing. Mr. Lackney, we don't always agree, but I have to say thank you for what you've done. I mean, I just can't believe what I'm hearing tonight from the county administrator. And y'all can sit up there like gnomes and just look at the people. But the people are fed up. I'm dumb enough to come up here and say it. But people are sick and tired of this. You know, gotcha moment, gotcha moment. That's the new catchphrase. It's like I'm listening to the Democratic Party talking about gotcha, something this, something that. Well, you know something, just because you expose something that somebody may not like, you know, why be mad about it? Try to correct it, move on. All that I can say is this county has never been this bad at all. I know I'm gonna come here. My family goes back to 1903 in this county. I'm glad a couple of them did because they saw what was going on. I'm sure they're rolling over, beating on their coffin right now. I'm sure we have plenty more to discuss tonight. Y'all have a good night. Thank you. I'll see you a little bit later.
Thank you, sir.
Carrie Marklin, 3701 Hope Meadow Road, Powhatan. I too would like to offer my thanks to you, Mr. Latchey, for your document. It was very informative. And the response that we received from Mr. Smithers, not quite as impressive as your report, I must say. And perhaps that speaks to competency. I don't know. In my long career in both government and private industry, I occasionally came across what I would call, or many would call loose cannon. And too often I would see managers repeatedly try to correct bad behavior to no avail most of the time. Ultimately, that loose cannon would misfire and it takes out everything that's in its close proximity. And if you're in close proximity, you just might get damaged. Mr. Lackney's memo is more than just alarming. It's really kind of frightening because y'all have been supporting this bad behavior for a while now and covering over his bad behavior. It's, it's just despicable. Folks, the authority that he wants, I want to make-
You need to speak to us, Mr. Mark.
Okay, I will do that.
Thank you.
Folks, I want to make sure that you all understand the authority that he wants is to spend your money, your taxpayer money on whatever he sees fit to spend it on. It's again, as I've spoken to you a number of times, it's policies and procedures. Follow the policies and procedures and then have someone audit the policies and procedures. How many times have I said that to you guys right here at this podium? And here we had it happen and you don't like the response that you got. Thank you, Mr. Lackney.
Do we have anyone on Zoom, Mr. Smith?
Yes, or Miss Debbie Weir's on Zoom, as chairman.
Yes, sir, Ms. Debbie Weir is on Zoom, as chairman. Mr. Weir, if you would go ahead, on Zoom, please.
Ms. Weir, if you state your name and address, please.
Ms. Weir, you're on mute. Now you're back. Thank you.
Yes, I was waiting to get unmuted. Good evening, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Debbie Weir, and I live at fifteen oh one Page Road. Tonight, I would like to share my thoughts concerning Mr. Latchey's, Ms. Lowe's comp and class report that you tasked them with preparing. This report should be very disturbing for the board, Powhatan County employees, taxpayers in Powhatan County, and the Commonwealth of Virginia, and all the current and future members of the Virginia Retirement System, VRS. Since Powhatan County is a subdivision of VRS, its employees follow under similar HR rules for class and compensation as state agencies do. I am a retiree of the Commonwealth of Virginia. Compensation and salary grades are explicitly defined by the Department of Human Resources, DHRM, with approval from the state legislature and the governor. They can't be changed or amended in any way without approval by both the executive and legislative branches. Since the Board of Supervisors is both the executive and legislative branches for Powhatan County, this effect, this decision falls to them, not the county administrator. In multiple cases listed in the report, not following the plan by changing grades for existing positions, giving raises without changing duties, and giving raises well above the Commonwealth of Virginia norms of five to ten percent is a huge red flag. VRS could possibly be watching the out-of-norm raises being given because this has a direct impact on employees' retirement benefits, such as retirement pensions and their state life insurance benefits. Any employee that stays as a county or state employee is vested with these retirement benefits with five years of service. Who pays the increased employer benefit now? Powhatan County taxpayers. Who pays the rest of the increased VRS retiree benefits? Commonwealth of Virginia taxpayers. So you see that not only do these comp and class changes make out, made outside of the plan affect taxpayers now, they affect taxpayers from now on. We are paying twice for these increases. Mr. Smith came to Powhatan having been the Director of Finance for Henrico County. And in Henrico, the Human Resources Director was his equal. Although he managed approximately a hundred and sixty-three employees, he had a Human Resource Director is equal that knew the HR rules and a county manager that he reported to that knew the rest. His experience in overseeing, is overseeing finance and numbers, not HR, not, not, nor a county. This is the first county that he has ever managed and given the proportion of population to budget, his salary is excessive in comparison to his counterparts in the adjacent localities. Unfortunately, I don't have the answers to fix this nightmare of a situation that he has created. His mismanagement has, mismanagement has broken a valuable trust with you, the county employees, and the taxpayers that I am not sure can ever be repaired. Because of this broken trust, I am very concerned that this will continue to cause friction within the board, thus inhibiting its work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weir. Do we have anyone else on Zoom?
Zoom is clear, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing anyone else, we will close the public comment period. Bring us to the consent agenda. Remind everyone, the consent agenda, we removed E, we removed C, and we removed D. The only thing there on the consent agenda is A. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No carries. Appointments number nine.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we've got two appointments tonight to the Powhatan County Department of Social Services Advisory Board. Ms. Lindia Cox and Mr. Kenneth Philbin, I've been, raised her hand and said they would like to be on the Social Services Advisory Board. We have a vacancy due to the fact that Ms. Cox's term was up and Ms. Gabe Bartlett's term ran out. So we had two vacancies, two nominees.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Cox is in District Three. I represent District Three, so I would move to recommend the appointment of Ms. Cox to the Powhatan County Department of Social Service Advisory Board for a four-year term effective October first, twenty twenty-two, and expiring on September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Have a second.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No carries. We have another appointment that's open.
Mr. Philbin, Kenneth Philbin is, is, made his name for that position.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
I believe Mr. Philbin is in District Four. I'd like to make a nomination, a motion that we accept his application.
I second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No carries. Ms. Cox and Ms. Philbin on the board, Social Services Board.
Our second appointment tonight, Mr. Chairman, is the Goochlin Powhatan Community Services Board of Directors. Mr. Michael Olansky has indicated his interest in the position.
Comments?
We also have another one, do we, nine?
I didn't see that, Mr. Cox. Who is that?
Turn the page.
Rebels.
It's Rebels?
Yes.
Fantastic.
Oh, no, next page over.
Yeah. Linda, I apologize, Ms. Rebels, so we have two nominations for that position. Thank you.
Anyone want to make a motion on these two applicants?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Ms. Cox.
In view of her long history and obvious qualifications, I would like to recommend Ms. Rebels.
Okay.
I'll second that. All right.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No carries, Ms. Rebels, on the Goochlin Powhatan Community Services Board of Directors. Next up, old business.
Yes, sir, it's requested by Mr. Williams, discussion on a pay-in class plan, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
I never come scripted to meetings. You'll never see me read a speech because I like to come and be able to take the temperature in the room and be able to absorb what's going on that evening. I would like to make a quote at the beginning of what's going to lead to a motion. Mark Twain said, "If you just tell the truth, you got less to remember." I think the people in this county's memories are long enough, going back the last nine months, where I'm not going to engage in a back and forth with what the county administrator has accused me of. Call me a name, call Mr. Cox, the same thing. That doesn't do us any good. So I'm not going to get into that. I think if you paid attention to our meetings the last eight or nine months, and people have, I'll give you an example. Right now, Powhatan County is wearing the belt in the region for the all-time number of YouTube views of a meeting. Our April twenty-fifth meeting where we took the assessment function away from the county administrator and gave it to the Commissioner of Revenue at twenty-four hundred views. You won't see that for Henrico, Chesterfield, Richmond. And that's not a title that I think any of us in this county feel proud of. I've had colleagues on boards and other regions tell me that their employees are watching our meetings because they think it's better than HBO or Hulu. Again, they're not giving you a compliment, folks, when they tell you that. So tonight, to give you a little bit of background and history, at the July twenty-fifth meeting where the majority of the board proposed and prevailed on a motion to give the county administrator a raise. They also changed the requirement for him to live in accounting and closed out with increasing the golden parachute, his severance. Now, this is in a backdrop of a series of train wrecks in this county. We went through, going back with the budget, where we were told in this county, the board viewed that there wasn't a tax increase in this county. We weren't going to have the usual tax notices going out to you. The public hearing caused there was no tax increase. Yet all of us knew that our assessments had gone up double-digit. And at that time, it was proposed to keep the rate the same, but there was no tax increase. I went to the Department of Taxation, talked to Rod Compton, who heads up that department, and yeah, sure enough, we had a tax increase. Then we had to advertise that tax increase to you. The county administrator then did that the first time, and he advertised it incorrectly. Then we had to run it twice more in the newspaper. This is costing you. That's embarrassing. Then, that night when we had the twenty-four hundred views on YouTube of the meeting where we had to take back the assessment function, the county administrator again hadn't told the board the truth. He said that the person he had hired, who turned out to have been fired three times in the state of Virginia, was qualified. It turned out not to be the case. He said that the assessor over the Department of Tax, Mr. Compton, who was trying to help us out, had recommended the individual, and that he had also said it was better to do assessments in-house. When that information got to him, the board, Mr. Smithers, received an email. And this was after an email we had received from Mr. Smither debunking both those things. So I'm going back to Mark Twain. "If you just tell the truth, you got less to remember." Then we go into, back in March, I remember saying in a workshop, I said, "There is no team Powhatan." The county morale, the employees, it's on the floor. Said it. Said it. And I said in the same meeting, I said, "If you're still over there programming for the new system that was supposed to have been ready to go, start testing, deliverable back in November," this is in March, I said, "Bills are going to be going out late, and it's not the Commissioner of Revenue's fault. It's not the treasurer's fault. It's because we haven't given them what they need to do their job." I said it. Sure enough, this year, the bills went out after the date we have usually collected your taxes. We usually have the taxes collected in-house by June fifth. Bills didn't go until the end of the month. A lot of people thought, even though the treasurer put on the bill, you know, we were going to waive any penalties, interest until August one. Most people thought they had a short window of time. They didn't see it for whatever reason, and they had to make a hurried payment. So all these things have been happening in the county, and yet the majority of the board gave Mr. Smithers a nine percent raise, moved the requirement for him to live in accounting, and gave him a better severance package. Now, at that meeting, I made another proposal. I proposed, and Mr. Cox seconded, that we request the county administrator's resignation. Motion didn't pass. It was defeated three to two. Then, last month, I made another motion. And this goes back to the meeting on four twenty-five. Commissioner of Revenue, at that meeting where I read the emails from the county administrator to the board and other emails to him, the Commissioner of Revenue came down the aisle and he told us that people were getting raises. Open your eyes. It's right in front of you. He encouraged us to look into things. Wake up, I think was the words he used. So I began to hear about raises, raises that I never received as a state employee, raises that amounted to twenty-six thousand, raises that amounted to, you know, high percentages, like forty-eight percent. How could that be? I didn't know anything about it. And yet, I'm supposed to be approving this. But anyway, I made a motion. And that motion was, in light of the salary increases and regrades that the county administrator had given over the past year, that we have the county attorney and HR manager assess the integrity of our pay-in-class plan and determine how well, or not how well, it meet, meets its goals of being able to provide equality, equity across all positions, and at the same time, shield us from litigation. That was the motion. After some discussion, the motion passed. And now we received the report, I think it was back Friday before last. The board received it. At that time, I took the weekend to read it, and I notified the county administrator Monday morning. And Mr. Cox and I wanted a special meeting because I wanted it in your hands as soon as possible. I wanted you to see what was going on in your county. It was very important because we work for you. That request went in. I was given an affirmed response. Will do. I go through, I notified Laura McFarland at Powhatan today. I said, "I would appreciate your help in letting people know about the special meeting." Special meeting requires three-day notice. I had talked to the county attorney. He shared that with me. And by the way, a requirement is for the county administrator to post the notice of the meeting. He never did it. At nine o'clock, I received an email after multiple inquiries. He was checking, well, other supervisors weren't available. That's fine. If the other supervisors couldn't make it, I didn't mind because my purpose was to be there in front of you and give you the information. Didn't happen. Couldn't meet the three-day notice because the county administrator didn't post it. So instead, I had requested that this be on the agenda tonight. The county administrator had asked me, when I posted or asked him to post a special meeting, he says, "Do you want to take off the Monday night request for pay-in class?" I wasn't about to do that because I didn't know what would happen. Good thing I did because, as you know, the special meeting didn't happen. Y'all were never notified. So instead, I said, again, after checking with the county attorney, I want it on the agenda for an open session. I didn't want to take any chances. This would be in closed session because, again, I wanted to have the discussion in front of you with the report in the agenda packet. What you see tonight, along with his response, the county, excuse me, county attorney has also provided another response. This is information. This is your information. This is your government. It's not ours. So I wanted you to understand I wanted you to understand how we got here tonight. We got here tonight because of a report. Resulting from a motion. Everyone supported uphill stage to have this. Report done by the HR manager. And the county attorney. So with that, I will go ahead and make this motion to get the discussion started tonight. I move. We fire the county administrator with cause immediately. That's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I second that. Um, Mr. Latchney question. Ben, this is a motion that was basically the same as what was made before. And that was defeated before. Can you make that same motion?
Yeah, Robert's rules only prevent the same motion being made in the same meeting.
Okay.
The new meetings are reset on motions.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So the motion's been made.
Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me, yes.
Uh, it was not the same motion.
Now, we've already got an answer.
No, no, they were, excuse me, it was not the same motion, Mr. Okay, the motion was to accept his resignation before. This is to fire him for cause. Two very different motions. Thank you.
So the motion's been made. By Mr. Williams. He moves to fire the county administrator with cause tonight. It's been seconded by Mr. Cox. Floor is now open for conversation.
Mr. Chairman, I would like at this time. To call on the county attorney. And. County Attorney Wood, would you please overview your report? And you've heard the comments from the county administrator. Tonight saying, nope. Everybody's wrong. This is just a gotcha moment. There's no foundation for this in the code of Virginia. Nope. Other county administrators are doing this around the state. I don't. Know what the question or how the question was phrased, you know, when this went out to the eight people that responded. But I can tell you this, people. I've talked to the other county administrators in our region. And nobody is agreeing with the county administrator. In fact, they are stunned just like you are when you read it. I said, I would never do that. One county administrator said, I bring to my board if I'm even going to raise. The hourly rate of a temporary employee. So. I would like to call on the county administrator again. To go through his report highlighting. What he thinks are the critical takeaways. And again, in light of the county administrators rebuttal. And particularly his night tonight where. This is a gotcha. Moment. As opposed to a real discussion about what is and what isn't allowed underneath the code of Virginia and our bylaws.
Yeah, I. Go ahead, Mr. Latchney.
I wouldn't classify the comments of the county administrators comments. I would call them a denunciation or a diatribe. But be that what it may, I will address them. We'll start with the whole gotcha. I will reiterate what Mr. Williams said. I wasn't trying to get anybody. I didn't even want this job. And I'm no for a fact that human resource manager didn't want this job. We didn't ask for it. It was unanimously voted by this board to ask us to do it. I don't know if gotcha means I did the job correctly. I should have done it incorrectly. I don't know what gotcha means. But it wasn't intended as a gotcha. It was intended to. Dig into this and see what actually happened. That was the question. That was what we were trying to determine. I will say right up front as well, in order to protect our HR manager from potential retaliation. I personally drafted this report completely by myself. She did all the legwork of gathering data for me. She pulled all the data together. I would tell her what I needed. She would gather it, which was a major undertaking. But the report is completely on me so that nobody tries to throw our HR manager under the bus in the future. Because that report was completely my work in order to protect our staff member because it's kind of unfair to ask her to be investigating her superior. Having said that, I think it's important that we get some history. I apologize, but I think history is important. Probably some people don't even understand what's the issue. I've heard from board members, what's the issue? So I think it's important that we do spend a few minutes talking about what's the issue. Well, in 2014, my second tier here. We issued a request for proposals. Asking. Companies to bid on a project to do a pay-in-class study here in Palatang. We wanted to, the county was growing. We had a lot of employees. We wanted a more organized, structured system for handling payroll. Nine companies responded to that request for proposals. And we ultimately hired Condry and Associates, an expert. In the field of pay and salary analysis, job description creation. We hired an expert to help us with these things. What Condry then did is they first they worked on job descriptions. They needed to know what everybody in the county did. What's your job? So they sat with about half of the county employees and then sat with their supervisors on the other half and different. Gathered input because they needed to pin down. What do you actually do? What does a human resource manager do? What does a utility operator do? And so they did that. They pinned down. They put a lot of effort into finding out what everybody's job was. Then they use something called the factor evaluation system. It is a uniform system for classifying jobs. It is used, it is considered the standard for creating job classifications. It's in the report that they prepared, but I thought I would tell you. It's a factor comparison evaluation system that uses nine factors to evaluate jobs. Knowledge required by the position. How much supervisory control the position has. The guidelines, complexity, scope and effect. Personal contacts, in other words, how much you interact with the public. Purpose of the contacts, physical demands and work environment. What they were trying to do is figure out across all the county departments. How jobs compared. In other words, how did the jobs in administration compare with the jobs in the sheriff's office? How did the jobs in public works compare? What were comparable jobs? All of the jobs were signed a grade. The numbers went up to twenty nine at that point. And every job was assigned a grade. The purpose was to say, okay, this job in public works is about the equivalent of this job in in finance. This job in in. HR is about the equivalent of this job in economic development. So they they attached a grade so that we would have a uniform system. People doing the same basic kind of work that need the same skill set. Same kinds of skills or equivalent skills. They wanted to create a uniform system so that all the county employees got treated fairly and equally. We had a lot of discussion. I see our commissioner of revenue sitting there. We had a lot of discussion about including them and compression issues. And we had a lot of, there was a lot of discussion on the purpose of this before it was finally adopted by the board. The board did adopt it. So every job had a grade attached to it. For example, I wrote down a couple. A utilities operator two was given a grade fifteen. A deputy sheriff was given a grade seventeen. And so basically what the study said is a utilities operator two. Doesn't require, in fact, I looked up the job description for a utilities operator two. And I'll get to that in a minute. I don't want to jump ahead of myself. In 2015, the Board of Supervisors adopted this as the pay-in-class plan. This is the system. Palatang County is going to be governed by when it comes to paying employees. We are by no means the only one. In fact, almost any decent sized organization uses a pay-in-class plan. My son-in-law works at Dominion. I asked him this week, does Dominion have a pay-in-class plan? Of course they do. It's all graded and you day everything. You're not going outside your grades. Commonwealth of Virginia, somebody mentioned it has a pay-in grass plant, class plan. The federal government incompetent as they are have a pay-in-class plan. Every major corporation has a pay-in-class plan. Because what it does, it protects us in a lot of different ways. For example, it protects us from discrimination lawsuits. We're not giving jobs to people. Or our salary increases to people. We're giving salary increases to grades. We're saying this grade seventeen. Needs an increase. Well, that might go across seven departments that have grade seventeen employees. It's gender neutral. Race neutral. It's designed to be neutral by its very application. That's why. Organizations use this system. Because the alternative is in fact an arbitrary system, which we will get to in a moment. So this was adopted by the Board of Supervisors in 2015. And we have been operating by it since then. We also adopted a human resource manual. We adopted it in 2015 and then we modified it some in 2017 and it's the one we have currently. And the HR manual specifically defines who does what. You can look it up. You can pull up our HR manual on the county website. You can pull up our HR manual. If you have a copy of my report, there's a link. You can click the link. It'll take you to all the documents that I used. And you can pull up the HR manual. Says all positions will be evaluated by the FES system. So all position, we're going to keep this system, this factor evaluation. We're not just going to randomly adjust people or positions. It says grade adjustments will be made by the Board of Supervisors. It's right there in the document. It says merit increases will be granted by the Board of Supervisors. It's right there in the document. New hires can be hired up to the midpoint. Of the pay-in-class salary because there's a salary scale for each grade. That can be done by the county administrator. So when he hires somebody. He can hire them up to the midpoint. Temporary assignments, you can get an extra five percent on your salary. The county administrator can do that. And promotions, he can give a raise up to ten percent or the lowest level of the promotion. So. Or the supervisors, and this is the critical part. Has sole control over grades. And over merit performance increases. That's the board. Nowhere is the county administrator granted authority to give anybody a salary increase. All increases have to operate through the plan. Which makes sense. Well. As Supervisor Williams said on eight twenty-three, we were tasked with evaluating the integrity of the plan. I, um, and what was it still effective, effectual? In the, in the attack. By the county administrator on me. One of the attacks was, well, the county attorney didn't tell us. That I was breaking the rules. Guilty as charged. I'm guilty. I didn't tell him he was breaking the rules because I didn't know he was breaking the rules. No one knew he was breaking the rules. It was, it took a request by Mr. Williams. This summer after Mr. Timberlake brought it to our attention. It took a request by Mr. Williams for us to even discover the rules have been broken. All of this has been done behind the scenes. One of the things that concerned me, and I reference it. Is Mr. Smithers flippant attitude about pretty much he can do anything he wants as long as it's inside the general fund. Well, it was all approved in the general fund. That is actually his philosophy. Is that he can do anything he wants as long as he stays in that hundred and nine million that we just approved. That behind the scenes, he can do anything. It's admitted. It's admitted that our current adopted budget, which we got an award for. Is not actually accurate and not actually what the board supervisors approved. But that's another issue for another day. So we looked at the data. We gathered information. Like I said, the human resources manager provided me with reams of data which I had to go through. What I discovered first, because there's been a lot of allegations, including in the most recent rebuttal by the county administrator, that. All the administrators operated this haphazard manner. So that was the first thing I wanted to investigate. Is that true? Did we kind of ignore the plan from the beginning? And so what I did is I actually went back to the inception of the plan. We've had three, two full-time county administrators and an acting county administrator prior to our current administration. What I discovered is the two full-time and the acting. Were meticulous. In complying with the plan. I could find no, no instance. Where they ever violated the terms of the plan. Merit increases, performance increases. Regrades of positions, new creation of positions. All of that was brought to the Board of Supervisors as required by the rules. Again, you can look in all the documents that I referenced. I attached or included every resolution. So you can see where previous administrators listed, we want to regrade this position. We want to increase. This salary. As somebody pointed out, that's how it works at the state level and that's how it worked in Palatang. Until two years ago. And so there is simply no evidence. In fact, I will give you a comparison. It's in my report, but it kind of jumped out at me. Our previous, our last full-time county administrator was approached by the treasurer's office for an increase. Well, state law is clear. That only the Board of Supervisors can give increases to constitutional officers and their staff. The previous county administrator put it on the agenda of the board. The board voted on it. They approved the increase for the treasurer. And it was approved. That county administrator and his predecessor and also our acting meticulously followed the plan. And there's been literally no evidence from anyone. In the rebuttal document that's on the agenda or anywhere else. Other than a kind of a playground, uh huh, that yes, they did. No, there's no evidence that they did. They didn't. Nobody violated the plan until two years ago. Now, the current administration, I brought out the treasurer because the first, the current administration, which took. Took office right as the FY twenty-one budget was taking effect. In July, I believe the current administration began in August. By October. He was already handing out raises to constitutional officers. There's. There's an email to the HR manager, the Commonwealth's attorney, staff needs some raises, give them $10,000. Wasn't brought to the board, wasn't got an approval, violation of state law, admitted as a violation of state law. And the county administration said, well, I got another opinion from another attorney and we will have to fix that. Well, yeah, we will because it was illegal. But it shows you right there, the contrast happened in the first two months between what the previous administrator had done and what the current administration had done. The reality is we have totally ignored the plan since the current administration took office. Now, it's important to realize. In Palatang County, as in most counties in Virginia. And it's different in Henrico where the administrator came from. So maybe that's where the breakdown is. But in Palatang County, the Board of Supervisors is in charge of everything. They are the executive authority. They're the legislative authority. They are the government. They don't even have to have a county administrator. State law allows one, doesn't require one. The county administrator can only do what the Board of Supervisors delegates to him to do. He doesn't have implied authority. He can't do anything he wants to do. He has to follow what the Board of Supervisors directs him to do. And so the Board of Supervisors never directed him. To begin giving these raises, begin giving these adjustments, begin giving these regrades. And in fact, the matter is, if it sounds offensive, I don't mean it to, but literally the county administrator has usurped and taken over the authority of the Board of Supervisors. Literally. The county administrator has served when it comes to personnel as the authority of the Board of Supervisors. Yeah, we may or may not care, but that's. What it's been. As I pointed out in twenty-one twenty-one, beginning with the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office. And I, and I want to go on record, I don't say any of these people don't deserve raises. I think our whole staff should get a big raise. You know, I can say that because I'm, well, I pay taxes here because I live here. But I don't have to face the voters on the issue. I think all our staff should get big raises and I, but, um, so I don't want anything I'm saying here to to be a reflection on that. I think a staff member didn't deserve salary. Or a pay increase. I think maybe they all deserve a pay increase, but it isn't the county administrator's job to decide that. It's the Board of Supervisors' job to decide that. They're the elected officials. They're the ones accountable to the taxpayers. They're the ones that have the authority. So some of the raises were mentioned. One employee within one year got forty-eight percent. Most of our staff got five percent. This employee got forty-eight percent. There were on May fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, keep this date in mind because it's important. On May fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, a whole handful, a whole list of employees got raises, big raises. One of them was eighteen percent. Another one was thirty-one percent, many of them twelve, fourteen percent. A whole list of employees, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. On July first, twenty twenty-one. The. Remnants, the unfavored members of the county staff got five percent. And these people got another five percent on top of the thirty-one percent or the eighteen percent they had gotten. And it's actually, it's actually in the documentation. You can't see it because it's personnel privilege. But each of these employees was told, hey, not only do you get this eighteen percent, but you get five more percent in six weeks. And so that, and it doesn't work eighteen plus five. If you're familiar with compound interest, interest, eighteen plus five is not a twenty-three percent increase. It's pushing a twenty-four percent increase because. Increases percentage increases compound. Here's one of the things that was, we also had lots of regrades. No evidence that there was FES analysis done, no evidence that there was any analysis done. Simply regrades. A couple of the ones I found particularly vexing, the utilities operator, and I don't know who our utilities operators are, and they probably are the best. the utilities operator, and I don't know who our utilities operators are, and they probably are the best employees in the county and need a big raise. I, I don't know. I'm only talking about the system. Our utilities operator two was moved from a grade 15 to a grade 17, equal to the deputy sheriffs. Let me read you the requirements for a utilities operator two. Ability to read and write and do basic math. Sufficient experience to understand the basic principles and their duties. Possession of a, a driver's license and ability to get a state license down the road. We actually regraded that position to what our deputy sheriffs have to know, what they have to go through. These training academy, they have to go through all of the work they have to go through. The utilities operator three, and I won't waste your time reading that one as well, was actually graded to higher than a certified sheriff's deputy. A certified sheriff's deputy is an 18. A utilities operator three was regraded to a 19. Again, this was not Board of Supervisors approved. Board supervisor didn't even know about it. They didn't know about any of this. One employee was jumped five grades at one time. They simply were increased by five grades. There, as far as I can tell, the job description didn't change at all and their duties didn't change at all. They were just increased by five grades. So what happened is 78, 79% of our staff got 5% from, that the Board of Supervisors gave them and, and appreciated it. 22% figure of speech, and I apologize, but I feel like this is what happened. They hit the jackpot. 22% hit the jackpot. They got way more than the other 78% of the county. This is, and this is important to remember because my conclusion was the plan is exploded. It's blown up. Well, when you've got, we've now created two classes of county employees. We've created the class of county employees that's still operating under that plan. And we've created this 22% of class of employees that have been separated. Either they've been regraded without an analysis of whether that regrade was appropriate. They've been increased as much as 48%. And now what you've done is you almost create the opposite of compression. If you know what salary compression is, where the new people come in at or more the salary of existing people, that's compression. This has created the opposite result of employees having large gaps between similar graded positions. Like I said, the Board of Supervisors never saw much less approved as required. Now, one of the arguments made in, in, in Mr. Smithers comments was, well, there's this resolution out R. 201531. I don't even know how to respond to that. Go read it. It doesn't say anything. It, first it was applied to Pat Wyler. It didn't continue on to the current administration. And even if it did, it doesn't give him authority to run the county payroll system. It certainly doesn't give him authority to change what was adopted after that. It's important to remember all of these pay and class plan and all of this grades and all of the salary scales. This was all adopted after this document. I mean, he's holding up a document that if you look at it, 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 it doesn't say any of what he claims. It says, I, and I'll, I'll comment on that a little bit again in a moment. So what our experts prepared our plan, had prepared, has been severely damaged by arbitrary decisions. Lest you think I'm misusing the word arbitrary. Webster's definition, not restrained or limited in the exercise of power. That's what arbitrary means. Means I got no restraint on me. Just do what I want to do. I, I give raises. Do I want to give raises? I won't give raises to whoever I don't want to give raises to. The problem with that system is it opens us up to all kinds of claims of, of disparate treatment, potentially of discrimination. All kinds of accusations can be made. If I'm standing in a, or if I'm sitting in a grievance hearing, an employee grievance hearing, it runs the risk of there being problems because the grievance officers are always making sure we follow our rules. Well, if we don't follow our rules, it's hard to enforce rules against somebody else. So that creates a problem. So the reality is fairness and equity are, they're gone. They're, they're, they're gone. We can, you can couch it any way you want, frame it any way you want, call it, got you, attack and criticize. I will defer to the citizens. One of the things I love about living in Powhatan is we have an educated, informed citizenry. And you're able to read and you're able to understand concepts and you're able to go look at documents. So I would just encourage you, just go read the report. Go look at the documents. Look at, you can see it for yourself. I didn't make any of it up. Nothing that I said was said without a reference to a specific document that you can go look at and verify. I don't know what the Virginia Institute of Government said. I don't really care. As Mr. Williams pointed out, Mr. Swither, Smithers already misrepresented what the Virginia Department of Taxation said. He lied to me another time about what the Virginia Department of Taxation said. So you'll forgive me if I'm skeptical with the Virginia Institute of Government said, because there's no way they even knew the facts. But who cares? Who cares what the Virginia Institute of Government said? Powhatan's rules are Powhatan's rules. Our system is our system. Who cares if Halifax County has a different system? Who cares if Loudoun County or Prince William County or Fairfax? So who cares if they have a different system? We have our system, which we have followed from 2015 to 2021. The final thing I wanted to address is this, this allegation. Well, the human resources manual, if you look at the HR manual, I thought we were past this one, but I guess we're not. Human resources under the direction of the county administrators is responsible for the administration, maintenance of the classification and compensation plan. Administration and maintenance, section 5.4, it was cited by Mr. Smith. He seems to think that gives him the authority to just do it, to change it. I don't know how many of y'all think the words administer or maintain equal change. If you're a manager at a McDonald's, which probably is a skill everybody should have. If you're a manager at a McDonald's, you don't get to paint the golden arches red. You don't get to rename the Big Mac. You don't get to come up with your own price list. You don't get to change corporate policy. You administer and manage, maintain the operating guidelines of McDonald's. It works this way at McDonald's. It works this way at General Motors and it works this way in Powhatan County. Plus 5.4 doesn't change what was said above it, which was that the Board of Supervisors will change the grades, that the Board of Supervisors will set the salaries. And so for all of those reasons, I mean, I could go on and on and on. The budget resolutions, I don't know why I pointed to those either. It, it says he can't, and they're all, they've all been the same. He can't change a grade except by the direction of the Board of Supervisors. He can't change the meaning of those words. Go read them. Go look it up. There, again, if you click the link, it's all right there. Every document that I relied upon is right there. You can read it for yourself. You don't have to take my word for it. I strongly advise you not to take county administrator's word for it. Just look it up for yourself. Read it yourself. See what it says. See what the document says. See what the underlying documents say. And, and if you know anybody in state government, any other local government, ask around. You're going to find out that nobody, nobody has a situation where the county administrator can just arbitrarily change salaries as he sits, he sit, regrade positions. If he can do that, then the whole plan becomes meaningless. And that was the conclusion of my report. The plan is meaningless. It is pointless. And at this point, my advice is we need to hire experts to help us try and figure out how to fix this, if it can be fixed. Sorry I went so long, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Lackney. Um, I'm going to yield the rest of my time to Mr. Cox.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Uh, first of all, uh, I'd like to direct the often audience, uh, both, uh, here and watching. Pay attention to Mr. Smith. Watch him laughing. Watch him smirking. Watch the total disrespect. That's the attitude. I can do what I want to do. You heard Mr. Williams earlier discuss the bylaws and called for a special session, which Mr. Smith ignored. Just ignored it. But yet tonight, he goes after Mr. Williams and tells Mr. Williams that he's going to use the bylaws against him. Mr. Smith, the bylaws belong to this board. You don't have a thing to do with them. You can't use them. Watch the smirk. There he is. Got him. See, this is the attitude. This is the kind of person we're dealing with. I'd like to pull up a slide or two. Could I have slide number nine? Roll it up just a little bit. Up a little bit more because there's another red. Okay. Uh, this is a list of jobs. You can't read them. Really doesn't matter. This talks about grade hierarchy. When we go through this FES system and we produce, we spend a lot of time and there are people that do this for a living, creating grades and jobs. We create a hierarchy of jobs based on the skill levels that are needed. And the minute you start messing with that hierarchy, uh, you have problems. Grades are established in a formal process that evaluate nine areas. County attorneys talk about the FES system, like pay for like work equality. But guarding the process for establishing grades is a critical issue for preserving equality. Bother some though it may be, the formal process to preserve equality keeps you out of trouble, discrimination. Discrimination does not have to be purposeful to bite you. Systems serve you as an employer when they are neutral, but most of all, when they're followed. And that's the problem. They haven't been followed. Could I have, uh, slide number 10? Here's salary and compensation system. Deputy sheriff's grade 17, maintenance worker three is a grade 14. Mr. Smithers world, he decided to make a maintenance worker three a grade 19. And a deputy sheriff is still a grade 17. So he changed the entire relationship of the jobs, one job versus other. So when Mr. Lackney says the system is destroyed, this is how it gets destroyed. The relationship is no longer there. All of the work that's gone into it is thrown out the door. We've got over a quarter of a million dollars in unauthorized races that have been documented. And if the board were to accept the recommendation that we needed to look at it again, we'll spend another $200,000 or $300,000 on, on a consultant to try and fix it. But we've got 20% of our employees who won't fit into any system because they've been so distorted by Mr. Smith. Could I have slide number 17? Confusion. At our August 25th, 2022 meeting, Mr. Smith used page 66, we'll get to that. I'll show you in a second, of the packet to demonstrate that the salary and compensation system was broken and that he was not the problem. Page 66 is a partial list of jobs in the county that have job descriptions and grades. Could I have the next slide, please? Here it is. Could it blow up the real top where it says deputy sheriff? Blow it up, write it. Okay. Mr. Smith took this sheet, looked at deputy sheriff, saw there was one. Could we go to the next slide, please? Slide 19. Roll it up. Mr. Smith said there's only one deputy shown on this page and everybody knows that is wrong. There are many deputies. He's correct. There are many deputies and they're listed in a budget document under authorized position. Could I have a slide 20? Zero N on the sheriff's department. Roll it down a little bit. There we go. There are all our deputies. 18 of them in one group, 15 of them in another group. Could I have slide 21? Roll down at the bottom. Mr. Smith confused a list of jobs and job grades with a list of authorized jobs. Two very different things. It appears that Mr. Smith has never taken the time to understand even the most basic components of our salary and compensation system, but he wants us to believe that he's following the rules just perfectly. He's not. He really doesn't care. You see his attitude up there on the stage. He really does not care. Could I have number 16, please? Three supervisors have voted to protect and reward bad government. My way of thinking, Mr. Smith personifies bad government. Now, we're talking about staff and compensation system tonight, but that's not the only thing he's done that's egregious. The 2023 budget process. Mr. Smith insisted there was not an effective tax increase, even with approximately 10% increase in property assessments. He was forced to admit that he was wrong when Mr. Williams took the issue to the State Department of Taxation. And it turns out there was a 4% effective tax increase. It's now March 31st. Everything has to start over. On May 2nd, Mr. Smith is forced by citizens to admit that the legal advertisement was wrong and we'll lose another two weeks. Bottom line, bills go out on June 10th with a penalty and interest not charged until August 1st. Normal bills go out the end of April and are due June 5th. So our bills went out after the normal collection dates, Mr. Williams said. Treasurer office had significantly more work to do because of the confusion. Example, there were 150 problems with mortgage process, mortgage processors versus the normal 50 non-stop phone calls and it just went on. No idea how much money we lost because of delayed cash flow. Let's look at the outcome. Could I have slide 13? Here's a slide. This was put out, okay? Reduced real estate tax rate, eliminated license fees, additional real estate tax relief to qualifying senior citizens. It was just over and over about how great things were. Whatever Mr. Smithers trotted around by my three colleagues on this stage about what a wonderful job they had done. Could we go to the next slide, please? Here's reality. Car tax fee was eliminated. These are Mr. Smith's numbers. Okay, that eliminated less of, of $1,198,000 less money we took from you, the citizens. That is correct. Personal property because of the ballooning value of cars, we took a net estimated, this is Mr. Smith's number again, $2.9 million. Real estate at 77 cents is a reduced tax rate, but an increase in taxes of two cents worth 934,000. So the net is $2,635,000, which if you were to make it, uh, apply it as a, as a real estate tax rate, is five and a half cents. Wow. You know, press release was all about reduction. Now you get to complete story. I'll leave you with the following question. You feel like they've been honest with you? Should we go back to slide 16? The assessment function. Mr. Smith told us when he first got here, he could do a better job. It was a disaster. We took it away from him. And the straw that broke the camel's back was when he brought in a person to run it. They'd been fired multiple times and lied and been fired because of lied about their credentials. He was very happy with that person. We were not. Keystone ERP, you're going to hear more about that this evening. It's not a gotcha. It's just fact. How well is it working? There are 1,571 credits, money we owe you for changing automobiles and we can't process. We're sitting on 1,571 credits, money what you're due and we can't process it. And no one's worrying about it. Barriers to management. Barriers to management. One of my favorites. We'll get into some of Mr. Smith. Barriers to management, these are artificial obstacles that are impede or prevent management from doing its job. In this case, we're talking about Mr. Smith withholding and delaying financial information, preventing me from doing what I'm elected to do to make sure your tax dollars are spent well and judiciously. First of all, the financial information about the county belongs to the elected officials. It's ours. Not his. Mr. Smith's job is to get it to us on demand as quickly as possible. But he doesn't see that way. And their three supervisors are happy to lay back in the weeds and cede their authority to them, just as they've ceded their authority for the staff and compensation plan. Unfortunately, they also cede my authority, and I'm blessed and pleased with that situation. Give you a couple of examples. December 2021. Mr. Bo, can you run the financial model for me with year-end June 2021 numbers? Want to see what the model looks like coming up on budget time. And so six months later, I want to know what it looks like. Where are we? Mr. Smith writes back to me. On December 18th of 2021, Tommy Bill has the model almost ready for primetime. I need to review it, then add a few updates. He'll be able to send it to you, the first round of updated data, most likely after Christmas, maybe this week. We appreciate your patience. February 15th. Ned, what information, he wanted to have budget meetings. What information are you going to provide in advance of the meetings and how far in advance? Ned, I've been waiting almost two months for a picture of the county's financial situation as of 6/30/2021. This is February 16th, 2022. Before I sit down and discuss issues going forward, I want a clear picture of how the last physical year turned out. I want to know what the first six months have looked like. Smith likes to sit down with you, have a discussion, but he doesn't want you to have a checkbook, and he doesn't want you to see what your balance is. See, this is withholding information. April 6th, 2022. Ned, please provide me with the effective tax rate calculations. These are the calculations that he was forced to do because he was wrong. I wanted to see what they said. Makes sense, right? 418, second request. 510, third request. Finally, in the middle of May, I get that information. So you get your information only on your own time. We hired a deputy county administrator illegally. Has no authority to hire a deputy county administrator. He's got two of them. I wanted to know about the organizational chart and the job description. This was on 6/27. This person had been hired 5/2. There was not an organizational chart. There's still not one available. And there was no job description. There's still no job description. But yet we're paying the person. We're just paying them what we want to pay them. It doesn't matter. Just pay them what we want to pay them. Couple of meetings ago, we had a discussion about CIP funding. And I wrote a note to Mr. Bo. You did not include the American Rescue Plan funds as a source of funding. Why? Savings from my 2018 bond projects were offered as a funding source. Please show me how you calculated the savings. Please provide a copy of the complete financial model and highlight changes that have been made since the version used for the 2023 budget. I wrote that on September 2nd. September 6th, he writes me back. Good morning, Mr. Cox. Unfortunately, I prioritized a few other time-consuming projects for Mr. Bo's time, so he will have limited time to help me provide you with the information. Go whistle up a rope. Okay? This is consistent. It's attitude. I'm in charge. You get what I give you when you get it. And my peers sit here and think it's funny to cede their authority to Mr. Smith. And unfortunately, to cede my authority. The divider. He's worked very hard to divide this board. It's got to be evident to everybody in this county that's paid attention. He loves dividing it. You heard him attack Mr. Williams. You heard him attack. Watch him. See him shaking his head, smirking? Watch him. Just watch him smirk. Is this what you want to see up here? It can't be. It's an embarrassment. And he is the ultimate divider. Is that the entire problem up here? No, but it's a central one. These are the reasons. Scroll down just a little bit more. Two supervisors want Mr. Smith held accountable for his poor, for his performance. Who suffers? The citizens' pocketbook and services, employees that shouldn't be moral should be morale. Morale is not low. There is no morale. I get conversations with staff, I get thank yous all the time for what Mr. Williams and I are doing. There's no bullying going on. The only bullying is a guy there smirking, shaking his head. Watch him. Pay attention to it. He could care less about you. You know how he feels about me. And that doesn't bother me one iota. Scroll back down, please. No, do the other way. I'm sorry. Okay, so these are the reasons we should fire him for cause. For 30 years of my corporate experience, if I had something like this, I'd have been fired for putting up with it, putting up even a modicum of it. Wants to talk about two gotchas coming up. Not gotchas. It's just places where the county is not functioning well. Ms. Weir was on the line earlier. She's correcting us because we're not getting our minutes done, because we're not providing the information we're supposed to be providing on the, on the website. We've got citizens correcting us. The problem that we can fix tonight, which is a start, didn't fix anything. This is, all we've done is find where problems are. There's no, we're not offering solutions to that. There's no solution in firing Mr. Smith. The hard work really then begins to dig out of all of the things that we've got to get straightened out. But for all of those reasons, I'm very comfortable with Mr. Williams' motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
Absolutely, Mr. Cox. Yes, Mr. McClung.
I would like to table any further discussion until after public hearings to give our citizens, they're here for public hearings, time to be heard. And if they want to stay, they can stay. If they want to leave, they can leave. I'd like to table it until after public hearings. Any further discussion of this topic?
He cannot do that, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a?
He cannot do that.
You're making that as a motion.
I made a motion, yes.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor.
I understand that.
And he can't table anything. We're in, we're in discussion, Mr. Riley, and until we finish discussion, nothing happens.
Thank you.
Chairman, I would like to call on our parliamentarian.
I would like to get there too, as opposed to.
A motion to table is a motion to temporarily move to something else. If something else is urgent, I will have to defer to the chairman and the board whether the public hearings are sufficiently urgent to support the tabling of this tabling. Doesn't mean we don't finish it. It just means we move something in front of it. Whether the public hearings are sufficiently urgent is not a parliamentary question. The board will have to decide that.
Yeah. Does he need, he doesn't need a second on this, I don't believe, does he? So we just need to do a vote?
It's debatable, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So we'll open it up to a debate.
Mr. Chairman, I want to know from the parliamentarian, what does the vote require?
Three votes.
Three votes because it's not killing the motion. It's only moving something more important in front of it to pick it up again afterwards.
Repeat the motion, please.
Like to table further discussion, like the motion to table further discussion until after the public hearings.
After which public hearing?
All four of them, A, B, C, and D.
Okay, I'm going on discussion on the motion. Folks, you're seeing it in live time. Unbelievable is correct. Now, we, we went through this. If you watched the workshop, you know, meeting last, the same individual made a motion to adjourn at 8:30. I said, did I miss a happy hour? At 8:30, the clock struck. The chairman didn't adjourn the meeting. Just got up and left. Now, you don't need any further evidence than what you just witnessed with this motion. I feel like I need to go home and get a shower. This is embarrassing. And you ought to be as outraged as I am, and don't interrupt me. Because they need to know, and they're witnesses to this firsthand. I'm tired of the gimmicks. I'm tired of all the poise. I'm tired of this stuff that's going on right here with this board and that smirking face.
Order. Don't go out of, don't get in order. Stay out of order. Order. Stay out of order. Mr. Chairman.
Hold on one second, Mr. Cox. So the motion is to table this discussion until after the public hearings are completed, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That is the motion that is on the floor. Yes, Mr. Cox?
We're still in discussion, right?
Yes, we are.
Okay. So, pretty obvious. Let's push it as late as we can. And one of the interesting things, Mr. McClung has now adopted Mr. Smith's smirk. Congratulations.
I have not smirked, sir. I have not smirked one time on this table. One time. That is a lie, sir. Just like all you other lies. I did not smirk.
All right, all right.
Let's take a.
Go ahead, Mr. Cox.
Now, here we are. We started off with an attack, Mr. Smith. That was orchestrated to allow him the time because once we got to the discussion of a comp and class, he couldn't have done that. Not allowed to make a presentation because he's not a party to it. Can answer questions, just as Mr. Lackney answered questions from Mr. Williams. So that was orchestrated. And now you see, Mr. McClung decided to join in the orchestration. So it is what it is. They can have three votes. But I think from my standpoint, it's, it's time for the citizens of the county to take a real deep look at these four and what they're doing to you and how little information they want you to have. And that's the whole thing, is how little can we tell the electorate? And by the way, you're not paying attention. We're bulletproof, and we can do anything we want. And with three votes, they can. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Appreciate that.
I want to interrupt real quick. My parliamentary decision was slightly incorrect. I've now got a copy of Robert Wools online because I knew I'd need one. It says a motion to table is not in order if it is to avoid dealing with the measure, which I believe this motion is. So I would say it's not in order.
So are you, are you?
I don't think, I think the intent is to not deal with the measure right now, which is not a proper reason for a motion to table.
Okay, all right. Then we'll go back to this discussion on this topic and move forward with the comp comp class pay plan. I will do this, though. We're going to take a recess for five minutes, and then we'll come back and we'll begin again. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so let's continue this on now. Anyone else on the board that would like to make any comments regarding class and pay plan?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
I would like to, please. I would like to offer a little bit of a historical perspective as well. On February eighth, twenty twenty-one, Mr. Smithers sent the following email to the Board of Supervisors. Good afternoon, all. I'm excited about our Friday afternoon budget discussion. Is my plan to stay away from line item detail and focus on initiatives and program goals while we discuss tax rate and project timing? I do have a favor to ask the board. As we prepare for the FY twenty-two budget, our agencies submit their budget requests for review. In those submittals, we have received requests for new positions and we have requests for reclassifications of existing positions. I plan to provide you with updates on all new requested positions, but I plan to handle the reclassification requests in a different manner. I want to review reclassification requests away from the annual budget process and utilize both human resources in my office to determine the merits of reclassification requests. The favor would be for you to redirect any inquiries received on position reclassifications back to staff. One final issue, I think the village conference room might be better conversation. Received back to him from Mr. Williams, yes, to your first request, and I'm fine with meeting in the conference room. Additionally, back to him from Mr. Cox, Ned, I'm fine with the reclassification request location. We can zoom this meeting from the conference room. So what I want to bring out is he told us what he was going to do. He said what he was going to do. He, he did not hide it, make it a mystery. I also would like to take a look at the county attorney's evaluation that was followed meticulously by the previous county administrators. The October twenty-second, twenty eighteen, the resolution was passed, R twenty-eighteen dash forty-eight. This is kind of the holy grail of resolutions. Personally, and I would encourage you to do the same as Mr. Latchney suggested, take a look at these resolutions. It's fairly nebulous in nature and the number of employees that were affected by this resolution, a hundred and thirty-seven, a hundred and thirty-seven of them. In that resolution, there's nothing about who's getting a raise, what retitle classification was made, none of that. It was basically that we're going to do a six percent market change and basically it's going to affect a hundred and thirty-seven employees. But the a hundred and thirty-seven wasn't even mentioned in the resolution. Then we get to the fact that the, it was followed meticulously and no other county administrator did any kind of a raise whatsoever. This footnote, as previously approved by the BOS, footnote number ten, resolution R twenty-eighteen dash forty-eight, three sheriff's deputies were regraded from a seventeen to eighteen upon becoming certified. In addition to the sheriff's deputies, one employee salaries increased upon his promotion to assistant county administrator. Well, it's kind of funny because the assistant county administrator, in fact, received his raise on February first of twenty eighteen, long before October twenty-second of twenty eighteen. Furthermore, another deputy county administrator, I reached out to Melissa to find out when exactly his raise took place, and it took place October first of twenty twenty, of twenty eighteen. Then I decided to dig a step further because we all agreed tonight that we were not in compliance with the constitutional officers. After the first fiasco with all this, I reached out to Melissa. Melissa, can you please verify that the constitutional officers have not received any raises since the MOU was agreed upon? I understand they did receive the raise last year, but if you could please verify the other years, that would be great. They've always received the raises along with the rest of the county staff. Prior to the MOU, there was back and forth about comp board raises versus county raises, but the constitutional officers have gotten the same raise since the MOU were adopted. So clearly, the other county administrators did that. The other thing that I want to hone in on a little bit is, you know, and I have an immense amount of respect for Mr. Latchney, I've always, we've always gotten along quite well. And, but I, it does bother me a little bit when he followed in part to his rebuttal to Mr. Smithers. And he said, I stated that I solely drafted the memorandum in a large part to protect our HR manager from retaliation and harassment. We will never know, nor will, nor should we, what our HR manager really thinks because she must continue to work for the county administrator. Well, if we don't know what she thinks, and she's our HR manager, and if you look at her job description, one of them is to be privy to all state and federal HR laws. And why is she on this committee evaluating herself and Mr. Smithers? Another thing, any claim, allegation, or assertion that our HR manager was in any way complicit or responsible for the rogue actions of the county administrator would be untenable. Our HR manager operates under the direction and control of the county administrator. When the administrator follows policy, it allows her to do her job. When he refuses to be bound by the rules, there is literally nothing she can do. So who's above the county administrator? We are, this board right here. And what I want to pose to you is I was chair for a year. This low never once came to me with concerns about the county administrator acting in an illegal manner. I, Mr. Byerley is currently the chair, he certainly hasn't mentioned to me or I believe any other board members that she addressed him in an illegal manner. And furthermore, she's got one other person that she could go to, and that's the county attorney. I asked her today. Melissa, did you ever bring to the county attorney any concerns that the county administrator was acting or doing anything illegal in regard to the comp and class plan? If so, do you have any correspondence? No, I did not take anything to Tom. So let's go one step further with our HR manager. Melissa, a few questions. Did Ned review the plan with you when he was determining the raises, et cetera? Also, given the recent monies to address compression in the raises, are we way off kilter with the plan or are we in compliance with it in your opinion? We did use the plan to determine how employees' new salaries would fit within the new grade. I would say that we are way off kilter because of market conditions. Since the plan hasn't been updated since twenty eighteen, inflation is through the roof and the job market is insane. We are most likely looking at substantial increases to the scale. The compression helps separate in accordance with the years of service, but did not address the market. I replied, so would you say some of the raises are really not that egregious in comparison to the market conditions and comparisons? Some of them very well may match up to where a new comp and class plan would place them on a scale. I would recommend, and I would like to make a motion, that we have Mr. Latchney's review and Mr. Smithers' actions reviewed by the Attorney General. Before I, and if he did something nefarious, if he did something illegal, then wholeheartedly, we need to know. I, and I have absolutely no problem looking into that. But I do believe a second opinion is very much warranted tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McClung, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, I would. First, I'm apologize for my actions a few minutes ago. Anyways, I said, why is he so mad tonight? Why is he so, it's, it's, I'm new to this board. I don't know who to believe, I don't know who not to believe. I was just called a very bad name by my peer right here. It's on video, it's on video, it's on that recording, it's right in front of me. I will be one in apology for that. I will not repeat what he said to me. Mr. Smithers heard what he said to me. If you in the audience knew what he said to me, it was an intimidation factor, and it's not going to intimidate me. I work for the people, I work for the people of District Two. The reason I'm upset, Mr. Latchney did a great report, fourteen pages. It was leaked to social media before I got to read it. District Two Board of Supervisors, every, I got calls from constituents that this was leaked to social media. And I said, who did this? Who did this? Well, I didn't have to look because the person that leaked it stuck Mr. Williams' name on it, per David Williams. And you asked me why I'm so upset tonight. That's why, and I agree with you, Ken, Ms. Carmack, that we do need a second opinion to get rid of all this. We need a new comp plan, we need a new pay scale, we need, because if we're going back to twenty fifteen with an old pay scale, old, it, it does not match up with today's world at all. We also had a time of COVID that everybody's forgetting about, which we're still going through in some form or phase. COVID, it messed up, a lot of stuff was done to help retain people. A lot of stuff was, it was a bad time. I do believe in a second audit. I don't appreciate stuff being leaked to social media by my peers before I even have a chance to look at it as a political stunt, another dog and pony show to not, to discredit anything. It discredits everything that's set up here. The only other thing I need to say is, Mr. Smithers, I know you have a budget. You, you are under the budget for salaries for the year, I'm sure.
We were five hundred thousand dollars under the two thousand twenty-two budget.
Thank you, sir. I agree with Ms. Carmack, was that a motion you made?
I didn't, but I will. I like it, but I think we have to vote on his motion.
We have voted his motion first, but I do agree that this whole plan needs to be scrapped. This whole thing needs to be redid, and it needs to go to Attorney General's office. Much higher than any of us here. And I think they'd be very biased, and when the chips fall, the chips fall.
Mr. Chairman, are you finished, Mr. McClung? Are you finished, Mr. McClung?
I'm thinking about it.
Take your time.
I am. Like I said, I apologize for my actions. Mr. Cox, I did not smirk when you said I smirked. I did not smirk, I did not smirk one time on this whole stage, we can get back to looking at the video for that. What Mr. Williams said to me, I will be, it warrants an apology, and I will be waiting for that apology either in front of this whole auditorium or in private. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Mr. Cox asked first, so let me go over there. He may not want to continue.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine.
Go ahead, Ms. Cox.
Thank you. Couple of thoughts occurred to me as Mrs. Carmack was going through her list of concerns. One, the question about the constitutional officers continuing to get the same raises, that's because they were paid by the comp board, not by us. We didn't pay for them, the money comes through. We're giving, they're getting the same amount of money that our employees were. So it's just like, it's like the five percent this year is being paid by the comp board, not by us.
There's a county match.
No, it's not a match.
Sure, sometimes there is.
Supplement, no.
There's a supplement.
These have all been, no, these have all, the five percent this year and last year were done by the comp board. They gave us the money, the five percent, yes. And what if you, if you don't understand, unless you don't understand the comp board, that's how it works.
I think we talked about two thousand eighteen, right?
Yeah.
And then now we weren't talking about five percent, you were talking about two percent, okay? And the comp board gave them those raises, go back and take a look, okay? This is, so there's that. What's fascinating is our HR manager has a whistleblower. So you work for Mr. Smithers. And you heard, as we started this evening, how bombastic he can be. And you say, well, I really don't like what I'm being forced to do, so what is my choice? I can take it to one of these three. What an answer that is, okay? Why don't I just flush myself down the toilet? Our HR manager had no choices. She really didn't. Now, could I see slide number seven? That's not seven. That's not seven.
It's seven.
It is seven.
Seven is salary ranges. Now, go, go, come on down, go back, go to six. I numbered, go to five. All right. Is that five? Then come to seven, which is a salary range.
It's.
Okay, go.
You're not all the, you're in the middle of the dog.
Next one. There we go. These are the salary ranges by grades. So when you talk about what's wrong with the system, there's nothing wrong with the system other than the grade problem that Mr. Smithers created when he just drove a truck through and decided willy-nilly to change grades for things. This is what hasn't been updated. And this is how you stay current with the market. You're supposed to annually update that. Now, if Mr. Smithers was really interested in staying current with the market, he'd have done this, he'd have had it updated. The schools are doing it constantly, we're constantly seeing the information from them on that. This is how you stay current with the market, not by ignoring it, but by updating it, and therefore you don't have to drive a truck through the system. What you continue to hear this evening is. Is. Well. It was somebody else's fault. It was another county administrator's fault. It was the HR manager's fault. Or I have some obscure set of. Memos that says, everybody else is doing what I'm doing. No one has said that the information that Mr. Lackney brought forward is incorrect. That the regrades and the forty-eight percentages and the twenty percentages and the twenty-six percent, this is about authority. It's not about a budget, it's authority. He doesn't have the authority to do it. And that's what it's all about. And my contemporaries appear on the stage, three of them, continue to want to cede their authority to him. And I don't. I was elected. By the citizens of District Four by significant margin. And I have a fiduciary responsibility to them. So once Mr. Williams. Asked for the salary information. And it became public. And I find out about it. I have an obligation to the citizens of District Four to make sure they have the information. If I sit on it, then I become part of the problem. And I refuse to be part of this problem. But we're going round and round. It just can't be. Somebody somewhere is surprised by this report. In August at our meeting, when I went through. Area after area where Mr. Smithers had exceeded his authority. And the county attorney confirmed it. This isn't anything new. It's done much better than we were doing before, and it's been done beautifully in terms of the information and the quantity of it. If you don't like it, then Mr. Lackney's put every source document out there that is used. No one said those source documents are wrong. We've heard people say, oh, you really don't want to believe it's that way. Well, it isn't that way. It is. We've got a county administrator. Who wants to run the county on his own. And he doesn't like Mr. Williams and I very much because we tell him, no, 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 no. Just like he wanted earlier this evening to appropriate the board's bylaws. Not his by, he doesn't have his bylaws. Along with his board. He can't do that. He hates it when I say, you can't do that. But that's reality. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're welcome, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Briefly respond to Mr. McClung, and again, I'm not going to, because as I said at the beginning of this meeting. I'm not going to do what the county administrator did, starting off with, you know, the different name calling, et cetera. And you should find it odd that he feels comfortable saying those things about his boss, two of his bosses. There, there's no professionalism, respect in that. At our last meeting. Which was the workshop. He was laughing while I was talking, and that's something you would do in the eighth grade. And what you're trying to do is minimize what the person is saying. I said. Now, Ms. Smithers, why are you laughing? I said, do you realize what you're projecting to the people that are watching this meeting? I said. A football coach, he said, you may not be worth a dern as a team, but you can at least look good in warmups. And I said, when you do this. You're sending a message to the public about this board. And it's very important that they see what kind of decorum we have. As I said before earlier, everybody's watching. My colleagues around the region, on other boards. They said, this wouldn't happen in my, in my county. This wouldn't happen. Now. Going back, Mr. Cox is absolutely right. What the conversation would like to be changed to. Well, you know, we, we need to update this plan. We should have updated it, you know, with the market. Uh, studies, some that Conjuring had recommended. Yeah. Should have been done. But that's not the same as what we're talking about tonight. That's not the same as creating positions. Going outside the board. Going up to forty-eight percent salary increases. Giving people $26,000 for a salary increase. Those things don't happen. And how you fix that. Is going to require somebody coming in that we're going to have to pay for from the outside. To tell us. How do we deal with these anomalies that he's created in the system? To be able, how do you come up with something? So that we can have a workable pay and class plan in this county. That provides equality for our employees and shields us from litigation. Because we're wide open. Anybody that wants to take us to court. We're there, okay? So. Just to get somebody to come in, as Bill said, you know, we're looking at. Hundreds of thousands of dollars. And then to fix it, if we were going to make all the employees equal in this counting. You're probably looking at something between three quarters of a million and a million dollars. I'm sure everybody in the audience is excited about that, aren't you? But that's where we find ourselves today. Now, the. Suggestion or motion that's coming from Mrs. Carmack that we send this down to the AG's office. I'd like to ask the county attorney, how long did it take us to get an AG opinion when we were talking about ag forestal districts?
Well, it took a couple of years, but if I may comment on this, the AG is going to look at it and say, I don't care. If y'all don't care, I don't care. I mean, you can ask for, you can make a motion and ask for an AG opinion. The Attorney General is not going to, I mean, he's, he's going to, his response is going to be. If your Board of Supervisors doesn't care internal operation standards, it's not my job to review your internal operating standards.
Okay, so when you say in your report. Um, that the code of Virginia unlawful, what do you mean by that?
Yeah, nowhere did I make an allegation of criminal. First, violating our local rules. The county, the Attorney General doesn't care. We don't want to enforce our rules. He doesn't care if we enforce our rules. So most, the regrades, the salary adjustments, all of those are violations of Board of Supervisor rules. State doesn't care about that. In state law, I mean, basically, if you want to let your county administrator do anything he wants, you can. As long as he doesn't violate state law in some other area. The state law violations were granting raises to constitutional officer positions. It, that's not a criminal violation of state law. That isn't something the state police are going to look at. It simply means those raises are legally invalid. That's all it means. When a raise is given that isn't legally authorized, when I say it's an illegal raise, that simply means all the raises given to the constitutional officer employees by the county administrator technically are, are not valid. And, and as I put in my report. I believe that to continue to pay those without board action to ratify them. Is to pay money that we know is not legally, they're not legally entitled to. Now, that's a different issue. If it continues, that might become a matter that the AG wants to look into. If we keep paying, if we don't ratify those increases, and I said this, if we don't ratify those increases, then we have, we have a problem. So, but, but the Attorney General doesn't care. From the standpoint of nothing illegal was done as in criminal. It was done as in not valid. The law, there's a Latin term, void ab initio. That means it was void from the moment it was done. It was void as soon as Mr. Smithers gave the raise to a constitutional officer. That was void. And all the money that we're paying them, we're paying them unlawfully. So that portion of it might be investigatable if we continue to do it now that we know. And so my recommendation is, has been, continues to be that we need to ratify all of those increases to protect the constitutional officer, officer employees.
Now, when you signed this report to the Board of Supervisors, you sent it to all of us, didn't you?
Yeah, at the same time.
Same time, right?
Yeah.
You, you didn't by chance send it to me early, did you?
I didn't send it to anybody early.
Okay, so we all received it at the same time. If you go back and look, I sent you an email. Copy the board, you know, and I asked you about the status of your report. Could I share it? And you said that that was up to, you know, Mr. Williams' discretion. And by the way, folks, I did share it. That's why you're here tonight. And I'm going to continue to share information. Unless it's privileged. And this wasn't. This is your information. So tonight. What you're seeing again is an attempt to obfuscate. To confuse the issue. And the issue is, is these positions that have been created. And nobody said, you know, getting away from, you know, is he authorized to do it? Why would you do it? Nobody's asked that question. Why would you do this? Okay? Nobody's giving me an explanation for that. Why would you go with a deputy county administrator four months without a job description? Still doesn't have one. I didn't approve it. Board didn't approve it. It's been said numerous times. Having the money in the budget doesn't sanction new positions. County administrator again has gone back and demonstrated from the former county administrators. That there has been no history of ignoring the rules. Particularly and scrupulously followed the rules. But they don't want you to believe that. They just want to say, well, you know, let's go on, let's fix it. You don't have any idea of the systemic problems that have been created from this. Folks, it's not going to be fixed anytime soon. If we started tonight, it's going to be in months, if not. A year or more before this gets strained out. And it's going to be painful. All because we've had. A county administrator that thought that he could do anything that he wanted to do. Because he was protected by three supervisors. Those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Somebody else is piping up.
Mr. Barley, Mr. Barley.
I knew, I knew one of you would. Come on.
Of course.
Absolutely.
Could I have slide eleven, please? I had twenty-one of them, by the way. Well, we're waiting on slide. Okay, here are the new positions. Without job descriptions. That I know of. How do you do that? Just make it up? Throw some money out there. What are, what are they supposed to be doing? How do you measure them? Why would you do that? We've done it. Mr. Lackney, you said that when we were talking about breaching state code, you mentioned. Constitutional officers. It's also the deputy county administrators, is it not?
Yes, state law says that the county administrator cannot hire an assistant or deputy county administrator without Board of Supervisors approval. It's a Virginia code. So again, those positions, technically, those jobs are void and don't really exist.
If you were to look at how we were arranged. When Mr. Smithers got here, we had a county administrator. An assistant county administrator. Those salaries were roughly $350,000. Excuse me, $300,000. Now we have. Two deputy county administrators. And a county administrator, and it's $450,000. A fifty percent increase in overhead. I'll say one thing for Mr. Smithers. He knows how to spend money. He's excellent at spending your money. He really, really dislikes accountability. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
I would still like to, after the Mr. Williams' motion is voted on. Make a motion, do you have this reviewed by the Attorney General? It seems to me. When I read the memorandum. In one hand, he's saying that it really has nothing to do with, um, violation of state code, et cetera, but. It does. That's what we're kind of accusing Mr. Smithers of is. Violating state code and. County code. I, I would like it reviewed with, by another opinion. And, uh, let me add one thing. Regarding the ag forestal districts, yes, that took a couple of years, but when we got the new Attorney General, and how quickly did we get that back? It came back within a month or two. So I. Have better hopes that things will be, uh, much more expeditious. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Such silence must mean it's my turn.
Point of order, Mr. Barley, you don't have a turn.
Uh, I can speak, I believe.
No, you cannot.
Mr. Latchney, can I voice an opinion or not?
No, under Robert's rules, the chairman can't join debate. Once a motion's made and debate has begun, the chairman can't join it.
Okay.
Our bylaws, you can.
Our bylaws allow him to make a motion, but it doesn't allow him to make, to join the debate.
I, I think you're right. The comments, I can, I can. That, the motion I can make.
You're allowed to make a motion.
Right.
And, and most local boards have a, a change that allows the chairman to join debate, but we, we don't have that.
Right.
So under Robert's rules, the chairman can't join debate.
Okay. Um, the, uh. Motion on the floor. Is that Mr. Williams made to move to fire the county administrator with cause. Tonight. Mr. Cox seconded that motion. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smithers?
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. McClung.
Nay.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Ms. Carmack.
Nay.
Mr. Barley.
Nay.
Surprise. Next up, we have, uh.
Uh, could I make a motion, please?
Sure, yes.
I would like to move that we.
Is that, wait a minute, that's changing our agenda. We're finished with this?
We're, we're making a motion.
It's related to pay in class.
Okay, yeah, I would like to make a motion that we have, um. The actions taken by Mr. Smithers reviewed by the Attorney General.
It doesn't need a second, does it, Mr. Latchney?
No.
Um, we'll do a, uh, roll call vote on that, too.
We'll have a discussion first.
Go ahead.
I'm going to speak to the folks in the audience again. What you're seeing play out tonight. Is what we've been talking about, which seems like forever. This is nothing more than an effort to keep the county administrator. In his position. To not do anything and to, once again, confuse you. To obfuscate. Give you the impression, you know, we just want to be sure, we're going to double check with this one. Folks, you have replete information. As the county attorney has said. Go read it. And I think if you read it, and I think most of you have. You know that we are way out of bounds with any locality you want to compare us with. And once again. This is embarrassing for the county. It does nothing to move us forward. And one day, when all this is over with. You're going to need a marshal's plan, a marshal. you're going to need a marshal's plan, a marshal plan for Palatane County to build us back, to get us back to what we were, because there's a butcher's bill that you're going to have to pay. And it'll be paid, and you'll pay for it, regrettably.
All right, Ms. Carmack.
May I add one thing very quickly to that?
Sure.
In regards to Mr. Williams, he's right. We are going to have to pay our employees. We are going to have to keep up with the market. I'm not exactly sure what kind of the ominous omen that he's putting out there. I mean, do you think we're going to retain and keep quality staff if we don't keep up with market rates? It's, that's not going to happen. You know, and I would like to ask Mr. Smithler very, very quickly, if I can do so, can you explain a little bit? I know some of the intricacies of why you did give these substantial raises, where some of our employees getting recruited?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, we, we constantly fight pressures from outside counties, especially in central Virginia, where so many localities are, are doing a better job than, than our pay sales do. And so we, we have to react in the marketplace, just like our competitors do. When, when a county comes calling on our staff, we have to be able to react and basically decide what slot would make sense for that person with those duties they're doing. Ms. Low and I work closely together in those positions to make sure we don't, that we make logical choices. These aren't made in a vacuum. We work together and we recognize, and we try to keep the good employees that are being pushed away from us. Oftentimes, duties change, responsibilities change within just day-to-day operations. We have a new ERP system that requires different skill sets and different data. And oftentimes, you know, we have to look at reclassifications to put the right person in the right place to take care of our business. We work with the constitutional officers. Their jobs are tough, whether it's the sheriff, whether it's the commissioner of revenue, the treasurer, they all have tough responsibilities. They're all different. And we have to work with them closely so they can compete. And, and it's, it's all, we have, we're trying to get it right. We just differ on what's, what is broken. And that's, I think, that's the issue. We believe the right way, that we're doing it right. Mr. Lackney believes that we're doing it wrong. I, I think, I'd just love to see an unbiased legal and professional second opinion, and we can get this thing right. And that's what we want. But we, we got to be able to react. When, when our good employees get recruited away from us, we don't want to lose them to a 30-day board meeting delay. And that's just one example of how, of a challenge we face with day-to-day basis.
And I can attest to that 100%. I have seen recruitment letters. I've talked to several staff members who mentioned implicitly that they have been called and contacted and offered significantly higher wages. And it, it is a loss to a county when you lose talent constantly to another jurisdiction. You get a lot of native knowledge that's lost. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Williams.
Let me read some quotes. This thing about challenges, you know, with employees in a market, you know, the other localities, they're meeting their challenges, and you know what? They're staying within their pay-in-class plan, and they're going by their rules. But I'll give you some examples. And Mr. Smithler's saying, well, you know, he's working hand in glove with the HR manager. That's not what I'm hearing. But let me give you an example. On November 1, 2021, the county administrator regraded the position of Economic Development Manager from my '25 to '26. He changed the position to Economic Development Manager. He increased the salary to $74,019 for an increase of 33% in the previous six months. 33% in six months. Third position was created by the deputy county administrator with a 24% salary increase for the assistant county administrator. November 1, 2021, the county administrator also increased the salary of the IT director from $99,807 to $123,553, a 24% increase. Folks, I can tell you right now, I worked for the state. I've worked in and around government for over 50 years. I have never, in my life, and I know people who work in the private sector, nobody's getting these types of increases. As has been mentioned before, some people, or there's one site, one case, where 48%, 48%, and this is all being done by one person. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Yes, Mr. Cox.
Thank you. Mr. Lackney's report had some interesting surprises for me. September 30th, 2020, he met with the Commonwealth's attorney, gave them $10,000 to allocate among his staff for salary increases. That was the first year for this board. That was the start of COVID. We had buttoned down everything. We had told the county administrator, excuse me, the Commonwealth attorney, we'd told other constitutional officers, and they were not happy. No raises now. We'll take a look at it, and we'll see where we are at the end of the year. He just, first months, he undermines the position of the board. But you listen to him. Sounds smooth. We just want to get it right. Just get it right. Of course, he means Ned Smithler right. That's what he means. And that we need to take care of people. 80% of our employees have been left out. 80% have been left out. So let's just get it right for the people I like. That's what we're talking about. I heard the term rigged. That's a kind word, sir. That was a kind word. So it's not about getting it right. It's about doing what the hell I want to do. And how dare y'all take me to task, make me accountable. Could I see slide number 16? That's fine, right there. Remember, this is but one reason to fire him. There's a whole menu of things he screwed up, any of which, in another county, in another place, he'd be gone. So we can focus on this, and Mrs. Carmack will get her three votes to send it to the AG, and if Mr. Lackney's right, nothing will happen, and they've bought him some more time. That's what it is, about buying him more time. But in fact, they like it, the three of them like it this way. They have the votes to keep it. That's a reality. And just like the tax increase you got, they said, we're bulletproof. Citizens don't care. And they got away with it. Five and a half percent tax increase. Now they're getting away with this. So unless citizens of this county want to put some pressure on three supervisors, because they, not because they need to pressure them, but because they don't like what they're doing, nothing's going to change. That was a reality coming in tonight, and that's a reality going out of here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just giving everybody an opportunity, make sure they got plenty, they said everything they want to say. So the motion is to send this to the Attorney General for review. That would be the, I'm assuming, the memorandum that was written in the 14-page dissertation by our county attorney. Is that correct, that motion?
Yes, and furthermore, to look at Mr. Smithler's recent actions with the raises and reclassifications, and to see if that was appropriate, or if there was anything.
Illegal?
Yes.
Criminal?
Correct.
Nefarious?
All the above.
So that's the motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, quick question.
Sure.
Okay, clarification?
Sure.
Okay. I want to make sure I understand you're sending it to the Attorney General, and what are you asking them to do? That's, that's.
To look to see if Mr. Smithler did, in fact, do anything inappropriate or illegal outside his bounds.
Outside of his authority.
Authority. Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
We'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Smithler.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
I don't have any problems with, okay.
Ms. Carmack?
Yes.
Mr. Barley?
Yes. That motion passes four to one. Next one here is the county attorney's memo. You want to speak about that, Mr. Lackney?
We've already done that. We've already done that. Finish that. Those were just part of the paying class agenda item. They were just subparts of that agenda item, which is complete.
I said, aye, two aye. Keystone update.
Yes, sir, and Mr. Chairman, members of the board, our Keystone ERP project continues to evolve. Currently, the financial module, which includes our general ledger, our budget, our payroll function, is into its second year of use. Our utilities billing module is fully operational, and so is the record-keeping portion of our permit center. Our online permit portal is near completion, providing online inspection results, but the online plan submitted function is only 90% complete. At Treasurers working closely with Keystone has whittled down a large volume of edits to daily processing procedures, and we're much closer than we were a few months back. But we're not there yet with the Treasurer's Office. We're, we're fine tuning, and we still have many things on our checklist. Our commissioner of revenue has also worked closely with Keystone to evolve their programming to his needs, and has accomplished some great things, and is working with Keystone as they develop the real estate assessment module. Keystone has been paid $666,000, other $720,000 contract as of today. That's my update, Keystone.
Ms. Barley, I put this on the.
Go.
Go. Okay. Mr. Williams put this topic on our 6/27 meeting, and not really much came out of that discussion. Here are the minutes. Mr. Williams stated that after various issues have occurred, he would like the county administrator to document functional and technical requirements. Mr. McClung stated that the board is on the right track as long as Keystone continues to help them through the process and agree to their conditions. Mrs. Carmack explained that the county could not move backward at this point. She suggested he ask the treasurer to list the problems, contact Keystone with those issues, and request their estimated timeline for solutions. Mr. Williams agreed and reminded the board that the reason for this discussion was to understand how these problems would be fixed. Chairman Barley stated that a meeting should be initiated and emphasize the importance of maintaining a good relationship with Keystone. I had no comments in there. I was kind of puzzled. This is a vendor we're paying money for, and we're actually scared of them. On July 7, as, as, after that, on July 7, the meeting was held with key members of Keystone, constitutional officers, county staff, Mrs. Carmack, Mr. Barley, and Mr. Smithler. Neither Mr. Williams nor I were advised of the meeting, and to my, my knowledge, there are no notes, certainly none distributed, but this has been the norm for Mr. Williams and me over the last year. Okay? So Mr. Smithler really didn't tell you much, but I would like, Mrs. Nonnelly's not here tonight, but her chief deputy is, Jenna Moss. Ms. Moss, would you come down to the podium, please? Thank you. First, let's get everybody in tune with the Treasurer's Office. You're a prodigious user of this system, are you not?
Correct.
Would you kind of explain what that means versus other departments?
Sure. So Keystone, we use this every day. Every single part of our daily routine involves Keystone in one way or the other. And as soon as we open the doors, this is the program we're using. We're not using any other program to supplement the work that we do. Everything from monthly, monthly reports that we do, daily functions, register, is all done through Keystone.
This is, this is how you do your job?
It is.
How you do your job, okay?
It is essential for our job function. We cannot use any other program in order to do our daily functions.
Do you have any major issues with Keystone?
Many, yes.
Could you tell me about?
Sure. The biggest, I've made a list of the four largest issues that we have at this point in time. Granted, Keystone has worked very hard in getting some of these issues done, just not in the timeframe that I believe the public would agree with. The first being, what you mentioned earlier, was the issue with refunds. There are 1,571 bills sitting out there with credits on them that cannot be refunded to the customer as of yet.
How long have we been accumulating those?
Since November.
Since November.
Of last year, yes.
And so we are about to turn the clock on.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so that has been raised to Keystone multiple times. We do have one programmer that has been working on it since then, but she's been pulled in so many directions that this has been just on the list of things to do, and has not been completed as of yet. So the public is suffering for that, not getting the refunds that they're owed from almost a year ago, which is frankly a bit embarrassing, not just for us, but, you know, for, for you all as well. The second is supplemental bills. We have just recently completed, or we thought we completed, a run of personal property bills to approximately to a little over 250 customers. However, 400-plus bills went missing with no explanation. Mrs. Nonnelly being one of them. She was owed a supplemental bill for a vehicle purchased in January. She did not receive one in this last supplemental run. Keystone was able to find the 400 bills on a backup. So somehow, there was made a backup of this data, but it had disappeared from our live system.
So if I understand that correctly, if Mrs. Nonnelly had had a personal supplemental bill to look into, Joe might never know this, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It was unknown to Keystone and unknown to us that they were missing to begin with. The third being inconsistent data. I'll keep it brief, but a lot of it, in the beginning, had to do with conversion from Bright to Keystone, which is understandable in any kind of computer conversion, but has been an ongoing issue. One of our biggest worries is estimated in-state income payments. They're in numerical order for the state of Virginia. We are audited on this, and there has been many inconsistencies in the numbering of these, of these reports that are given to the state, which could be detrimental to our county audit. Luckily, we have employees who are very dedicated to reviewing everything that goes to the state of Virginia, and we're able to catch these issues before they became a major problem. Another is costliness. Simply by converting to a new software system, BMS, our bill printer, they charge extra money for the software that we have. They had to upgrade our account. BMS, our bill printer, they charge extra money for the software that we have, they had to upgrade our account. Also, there are many travel expenses, since employees are constantly having to visit the locality to fix issues. We're racking up quite a large travel bill to Keystone. Also, certain processes that we used to have on our old software that we were used to, that we were using daily, monthly, yearly, a lot of those same processes are not available currently on Keystone, and we were told we must pay for them. Did you want me to continue?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So, our concern is that the customer has been mostly affected by this. You know, we as employees, yes, it has been a pain to convert, obviously, anywhere, wherever you convert a software system, it is going to be a learning curve, it will be difficult. But the customer is, is having the biggest issue, they're not getting their refunds, they're not getting their bills properly prorated. Transactions take longer to process, we've had many complaints from customers standing right in front of us, asking why it's taking so long. Public inquiry information is not live, which is what the, which is what customers were used to, as well as title examiners. Payment history is unavailable, this is especially important during tax time. So if you're getting ready to file your state income taxes, it's not available online to look at receipts for the amount of money that you paid to personal property, real estate, et cetera.
So that creates more work for you, right?
It does. So we, we had exponentially more calls, more emails. Ms. Nonnelly herself was bombarded with nothing but real estate inquiries, especially during the month of March, April, when most people are getting that information together. The website itself was unavailable for over seven months. No payments could be made, no real estate inquiries could be looked at. It was, our website was honestly a joke for seven months, because we could not have online payments or real estate inquiries. There's actually a real estate company that had to put a disclaimer saying that the information given on Palatine Real Estate may or may not be correct due to the lack of availability of the software. Another complaint from customers is that we have actually had to have them come back the next day to finish a transaction, because it either had taken so long, or because to reverse the transaction would have had to make them wait for a long time to get a software coordinator to fix the issue. So in, in summary to this, the customers are who are suffering, followed by the employees, who have to make apologies to them on our shortcomings. Our two new hires, who started in jail, July of last year, only used the software for four months, or used our old software for four months. They actually, even after a year, still prefer the old software, and had, they admit, was more functional than what we have now. List of issues, well, yes, Keystone has been great in fixing a lot of our problems thus far. Our list of problems is getting bigger, they're not getting smaller. These things, some of these things are snowballing. So in the beginning of the year, we had maybe a few hundred refunds to do, now we have over fifteen hundred. So that's more and more customers that are coming forward that cannot get a refund. The loss to functionality and constant struggle greatly outweighed some positives. I believe the system could be, could be wonderful, maybe in a couple of years, at this, at the rate that we're going and fixing our issues. So that's a, a cost to the public, it's costing them our functionality. I just believe it wasn't ready for us, it was not able to handle us, and still is not able to handle Palatine.
Thank you, Ms. Moss. Does anybody have any questions for her?
I have. Chairman. Go ahead.
Jenna, thank you for the information, when I met with you the other day, you shared with me what you've shared tonight, that refunds, there are currently fifteen hundred and seventy-one refunds where we owe people money in the county.
That's right.
And that can be done. We have supplemental bills, revenue to the county, got what, over four hundred?
Yes.
Alright, so you put the two together, we're talking money. And then you're talking about cost. County is being billed additionally for the printing server. BMS. Simply converting the software forced BMS to upgrade our account with them, which includes additional costs and fees, services that are used that used to be much cheaper. This all goes back to technical and functional requirements. Now, my understanding is, if I wanted to go like with any other system development, you can go someplace, either digital, manually, and you can see those requirements that were documented to be able to implement a system that met the user's need at all organizational levels. Yet, what I'm told in conversations with you and other county employees, no such thing was done. Instead, it was conversations, yeah, we can do that. And now, we're back to where Mr. Cox has said, I originally brought this up, we had a meeting, and various supervisors, you know, opined, but we really didn't come up with anything about how we were going to address your problems in particular, because you interface with the public, and the public is not happy, are they?
Yeah.
They don't like the user interface, do they?
No.
Okay, so the problems were supposed to be addressed and diminished over time, but using your term that you used in the conversation with me, they're snowballing. So I'm gratified that the vendor is still talking, but darn it, this thing was supposed to have been in place, ready to go in November. What is this? We're coming up almost, coming on a year, aren't we? And your problems are still snowballing, and the people in this county are still not getting their refunds. Some of them are having to pay the whole year's tax bill, right?
Correct.
This is wrong. Now, one, again, I applaud you and the other ladies in the Treasurers Office, because as users, you're struggling to figure out ways to get it done every day, workarounds. And you told me that you will enter data one time, and it'll go through, and then the next time, you have to call the vendor to be able to get it fixed, and you don't know what the problem is. So that tells me the edits in the system aren't working. Otherwise, they would, you would have integrity, it would do the same thing every time. And you don't have that sort of too, do you?
No.
But again, I want to thank you for taking the time out to share with me, and I know you talked to Mr. Cox, about the ongoing problems. And again, we're coming up on a year, and again, the question is going to be, you know, are we going to continue to use third-party systems? I know you're still going back to Bright.
We are, yes.
Okay, I know the assessment function over in the Commissioner's Office, he's still using the old system. Okay, so at what point do we close this thing down and come to whatever it is the system is going to be in Palatine County? Is there going to be Keystone and these add-ins around it? If that's the case, I want to know. But the first thing I know is, what have I paid for, and why am I not getting the deliverables that we should have been here in November? And I'm not getting any answers. This is not directed to you, so I didn't mean, mean to, you know.
Understood.
Imply. So, boy, that's a question.
Mr. Williams, let's let Ms. Moss sit down.
Excuse me?
Let's let Ms. Moss sit down.
You don't want to sit down, you want to stay up here for the rest of the night like us, right?
Oh, I will say, I do have a, a summary of what I've gone over. If, if any of the other board members would like a copy of that, as well as a list of problems that still exist since we converted in November, and new ones that have come up since then. If any of the other board members would like a copy, I'd be glad to send it.
Absolutely, please email that to all of us.
Yes.
Including the county administrator.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cox. So, we had a little meeting here, and we didn't decide anything, and then there was meeting between two supervisors, Mr. Smith, of which, there no plan came out of that, that I'm aware of, no documentation, and Treasurers Office is suffering. Mr. Timberlake, on the real estate side, is able to function, because he's not using it. This sounds a little different, Mr. Smith, than what you just went through. And this is not a gotcha, this is real information, these are real problems, and these are real one thousand five hundred and seventy-one bills. They're not being, our credits are not being given back to citizens of Palatine County. What do we, I want, it's not going to happen tonight, I want a real plan, and we don't have one. And this does not mean worrying about, is Keystone continuing to talk to us? Matter of course is, and this is not a threat, but the reality is, if Keystone doesn't get this right, they're out of business in the Commonwealth of Virginia. It's just that simple. We're too big a customer for them to just say, we screwed it up, trust me again. So I'm not suggesting we club them, but the fact is, we, they have reasons why they need to change their approach to us. And as one constitutional officer put it to me, we need to understand who the client is, the client's us. So I would like a real plan, we don't have one. Or if we have, nobody will share it with me, but that's okay. I don't get a lot of things shared, but I need a real plan. I don't think that's an unreasonable thing to ask, I don't know how my other board member feel.
Any other questions, Mr. Cox?
No, sir.
Okay, good. Any other comments on this?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Like, Mr. Cox, and like I said before, I want some commitment to resolution, whatever it's going to be. I want to know. I don't want to keep going down this road where Jenna has shared with us, you know, that the problems are not diminishing, they're snowballing. And what's it going to be, what's going to be the plan, what is it we're going to do as a county with this system that we have today? I want to know.
You can go get him some information.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I thought, yeah.
Okay.
We're always working with, on that plan.
Can we get that information within a, a week?
Sure.
Okay. Now we go to new business.
First item on new, this new business is a use of county property policy is requested by Mr. Cox, Mr. Cox.
As we're all aware, Mr. Barham has been unhappy, but this is not to rehash Mr. Barham. This is to try and understand what the process is, and where is it functioning, is it not functioning? Uh, so, when a temporary event permit comes in, where does it go, Mr. Smith?
Planning office.
Excuse me?
The planning office.
Okay. And they're supposed to get back to the applicant within fifteen days? That's.
Fifteen days of a completed application.
Fifteen, fifteen, yeah.
Once he, once he submit to complete.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's what, that's what the ordinance says, that's, okay. If I understood Mr. Barham right, that's not what occurred with him.
Not quite, Mr. Cox, and I'll get right to clarify, Mr. Shaw, I need to clarify, Mr. Barham did not have the property owner's permission with his event permit as part of the application, so.
So that was, that was a reason for denial.
He did not have a completed application.
Well, how can he have, not have a completed?
He has to come to the, to the, to the property owner and get permission.
Right, which is a county.
Right.
So he sends the, he sends the application in, okay, and we don't sign it, then we tell him we're not going to sign it, and it's over. Did we tell him we weren't going to sign it?
Yes.
When? It wasn't within fifteen days?
And we didn't get a completed application.
Wait a minute, you can't get a completed application, but we got to sign a completed application, to have a completed application. I'm, that's not a process that works.
If he had a completed application, we would have responded in fifteen days. I, I can tell you.
So, it would, the part of the, part of the application for anybody is getting us to sign it, right?
I'll never take a piece of.
No, 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 is it for Festival of the Great? Yes, okay, and is their application signed? No. Their app.
I don't know the answer to that.
No, I, I do. Okay, I wouldn't have asked it. Fair enough, okay, so, no, we didn't ask him to sign it. That was for you. So, you've just described a, something that looks like a wheel in a rodent's cage, where you just go round and round and round and round and round, and get nowhere, okay? So, what I would like, I don't want to belabor this, is, is a real process that deals with getting these answers and getting them quickly. And saying, well, you don't have a completed application, because they haven't signed it, and therefore, we're not going to respond to you, because you don't have a completed application.
We did, we ultimately responded, you're right, we did not make the fifteen days.
We're not going to, and I don't have any problems with that, okay? My, my wife ran Festival of the Great for two years, I've worked there for, for, for eight or nine years, I don't have any problem with that. What I want is a process that our citizens understand, and that we are consistent with, that's all. Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Any other comments? All right. Next, Mr. Smith.
That's, next item is Department of Social Services, item requested by Mr. Williams.
Go ahead, Ms. Lee.
Hey, Mr. Chairman. I asked the question some time ago, after receiving an email that I forwarded to the county administrator, and to the two deputy county administrators, the board. I think I even copied, you know, the county attorney, asking about our sexual and domestic violence program here in the county. Let me explain why I asked that question. By the way, I didn't go looking for this. Back on August twenty-third, I received an email, and the email is from Heather Salmon, who is the Case Management Coordinator for Goodson Cares. And it's regarding the sexual and domestic violence program. Good morning, I wanted to follow up to see if you've been able to find out any more information on Palatine sexual and domestic violence services, especially shelter. Our SDV program is seeing an increase in Palatine resident referrals, and unfortunately, we are not able to provide, or able to continue serving Palatine at this level with our limited capacity. I look forward to hearing from you. Please feel free to pass this information on to anyone involved with SDV services. So, the first email I sent, that was August twenty-fourth. If you're familiar with the nomenclature of our system, you enter the first letter of their name, and then the last, or excuse me, the last name, you enter the first letter of the last name, and it'll bring up their email. I incorrectly addressed, instead of to Mr. Smith, it went to Neil Stout, who was formerly. I incorrectly addressed, instead of to Mr. Smither, it went to Neil Stout, who was formerly on the social services board. But all that said, two county administrators, system county administrators were notified in the email along with the board. One of our board members, as you know, is on the social services board. Ned, can you explain why Goochlin's SDV program is getting so many referrals from Palatine? Please see the below email. Do we have an SDV program in Palatine? If so, is the program through our social services department or another entity? How is it staffed and what services are provided? Thank you. David. Okay. I had to send a couple more emails and saw that I incorrectly addressed the first time to Ned, but the others' emails were valid. So the second and third go around, it was to Mr. Smither, and copying everybody else still. It's a fairly straightforward question because particularly now, social services is underneath the county administrator. That was effectuated back in March when Mrs. Carmack shepherded the transition from administrative to advisory. And the board supported that. So I wanted to know where the program was because it can reside with a nonprofit, can reside, you know, with a social service department. I didn't know. But it is my responsibility as one of the five supervisors to know how we're meeting people's needs in this county or not. So after continuing to ask that question, on September 1, I received a response. It says, from Mr. Smither, "Good afternoon. Yesterday I was able to connect with Miss Salmon at Goochlin Cares, and she was able to provide me with some more information on the domestic violence program. This is the first time I've had the pleasure of talking to Miss Salmon. I plan to continue to keep an open line of communication with her in the future. Our team will review our domestic violence services, including our existing use of the great team in Goochlin Cares to determine if we have any further opportunities to work together since in Palatine." So this goes on, "Please note that I've limited the recipients of this email to Palatine County staff and board members, and I have added Ms. Carol, our social services director, to the list. She and I will get together and discuss domestic violence and the use of third-party solutions, third-party solutions, in the near future, and she will be able to provide some additional details to the Palatine team once she and I are, when she and I have concluded our discussions." She and I were not included in the original request for information, so I appreciate it. But then, go back, I copied two deputy county administrators, one of which had been a social services director before accepting the deputy county administrator's job in Palatine County. So I was quite sure that the information did get to Mr. Smither because they're part of the team here in Palatine. But nonetheless, we finally got to that point. But note that it says that we're, let's talk to my son, "We will continue to keep a line of communication with her in the future. Our team will review domestic violence, including our existing use of the great team in Goochlin." The reason I got the email is because I went over to Goochlin and took the tour of Goochlin Cares. Told Brad about it. Very impressed. And so in going around with Sally Graham, who's the executive director, that's when I met Heather, and that's when she began to explain their program in Goochlin and how they had the program under their tent and were working with the social services department in Goochlin. And that's when she brought it up, and she asked me, you know, about the increasing number of Palatine residents requesting services in Goochlin. So she later followed up because, again, they were getting these referrals from people in Palatine. So I went and then looked at our social services department website. It's got the hotline number, and it's got, at that time, four or five different services that we provide for social and, excuse me, for sexual and domestic violence. It was out there. So later, we got a email from Miss Graham, who is the executive director, that I would like to read. And this is dated September 1. And this, again, is from the executive director of Goochlin Cares. She says, "Friends, thank you for your questions about the sexual domestic violence program and our experience serving Palatine survivors. I'm responding to you as a group to help you understand our work and hopefully answer your questions. Over the past 32 months, our family service director, the chair of Empower Net Regional SDV Collaboration, Heather and I have reached out to social services for updates on Palatine's DV services. We did not receive a response. Palatine County website still shows Palatine Social Services providing DV services. In reality, these services do not seem available as survivors are coming to Goochlin area for assistance. Assessing SDV services in Palatine seems to be difficult for clients and other agencies alike. For example, Palatine Social Services itself recently referred a Palatine victim witness client to Goochlin Cares for support. While Goochlin Cares SDV advocate was providing court accompaniment for the client in the Palatine Court, Georgia Royal, explained to the perpetrator's attorney that the reason Goochlin Cares is providing the services to the victim is because Palatine does not have an SDV program. Although our primary service area is Goochlin County, we do not turn others away. Since May 22nd, or excuse me, since May 2022, we have served eight Palatine systems with a total of 64.75 staff hours, $10,636.14 in financial assistance. The services we provided, shelter, basic needs, food, clothing, gas, court accompaniment, transportation, legal consultants, supportive counseling, safety planning, relocation, 24/7 hotline services. Goochlin Cares has one shelter. It consists of eight rooms, four and a half ass, three communal kitchens with laundry. We can serve up to 15 individuals at one time at the shelter. Shelter is a dual shelter, serving SDV survivors and homelessness. We serve men, women, and families. The funding for Goochlin Cares Sexual and Domestic Violence Program is provided by Goochlin County Grants, private donations with a focus on serving Goochlin residents. Financial and staff capacity is limited. We would appreciate your consideration for reimbursement for the financial assistance we have provided Palatine victims. Thank you for concern that the SDV victims in Palatines, in Palatine receive services that are critical to their safety and well-being. So that was the response back. Still not sure today what exactly it is that we're doing with sexual and domestic violence. But if you recall, I've been, previous meetings, I've asked for reports from social services. Other localities, they get those reports. The board receives them. And this is important because back during the discussions in March about moving this program and moving social services underneath the county administrator, it was stated by our representative on the social services board, Mrs. Carmack, that they hadn't received anything but financial reports since 2019. So all of you know my background. I worked for the Virginia Department of Rehabilitative Services 25 years, which is now the Virginia Department of Aging and Rehabilitative Services. Worked down in the General Assembly, representing the Virginia Rehabilitation Association for eight years. I've been an advocate all my life. Master's degree is in rehabilitation counseling. So when it comes to service delivery programs and serving people, I know more than the average person. So if you're only looking at the financial reports and you're the board, then you're not getting what you need to do your job. Because in this county, we have all kinds of service delivery programs. Foster care, protective services, all different types of programs to help people. And if you're not getting that information, you should. That's why I've been asking for reports to the board. Now, in particular, because it's underneath the tent of the county administrator. We need to know how well people are being served and not being served in this county. And if you go back and look at the minutes for the social services department the last couple of years, you don't see any discussions with the board on how well or any particular problem relating to serving people. That's why I've been asking for the reports. Haven't seen any. That's why I put this on the agenda tonight. Because as this has come to light about the sexual and domestic violence program that people are going over to Goochlin because they can't get services here, I want to know about all programs, not just this one, but how well people are being served. So tonight, I would like to, you know, hear from the county administrator, where are we with social and domestic violence or sexual and domestic violence in Palatine County?
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I can't believe I'm saying this, but thank you because I think we've got, we've learned a lot in the last three weeks about our programming, what the great program in Goochlin Cares does, other third-party involvement in domestic violence. And so if it hadn't have been for you asking the question, I wouldn't have gotten the education over the last two, three weeks. I've been working closely with our social service department to understand and moving parts. And I have learned a lot. So we will have an answer to this. And one, one thing I can say is the, the reports that you are asking for, if you remember, the state does a great job of a dashboard of reports that shows you performance measures that each, a big social service department, if I'm the Commonwealth. The state health department director, Danny Avula, Dr. Avula, has now said he wants to put those reports on the shelf because he feels like that they're misleading people and he's having his staff redo that. So those reports that I know that you want to see and we want to see, but the state is fine tuning those. We can't help you quite on that, but we can help you get a better understanding of what we're doing, and we're not there yet. We're hustling. I've earned a lot.
Okay, Mr. Smither, they have taken the dashboard down. That you're absolutely correct. I learned that as well. I went to, you know, I guess a week ago, and I got the error message. Now, what the Virginia Department of Social Services needs to do is to correct that.
Right.
But you're, you're correct. They have taken that down for the very reasons you said, okay? But they have internal reports in their system that are available that can be used by social services staff for reports to us. Okay, what you saw for the dashboard was a higher level representation of the more detailed reports that they have in the system, that they're continuing. Because there isn't one social services program that doesn't have metrics about how well you're serving the population you're supposed to be serving. I can't think of any, whether it's the social services department, whether it's the Department of Rehabilitative Services. Those metrics exist. It's public information. Because the consumers want to know, taxpayers want to know, the General Assembly wants to know, and a lot of these programs include federal fines. So you're reporting to the feds, to the state, and to the locality. So the information, Mr. Smither, it does exist. Now, in one of the emails, you had said to Ms. Graham that we have a cooperative agreement with Hanover Safe Place. This was an email that you sent to her on 9/16/22.
9/15?
9/16 is what I've got.
Okay.
Okay. And you, you said basically the same thing you're saying tonight. Novus, become more familiar with the program, and thanks, Ms. Salmon, for helping you out. We strive to serve. We were made aware of domestic violence victims through various avenues. Mostly, we receive a CPS referral. And you might want to explain to people that's Child Protective Services. So these are people's lives. This is no small thing. Then we go on. You say, "We do have, have a partnership with Hanover Safe Place, who can provide those along with long-term housing to our clients." Being as well on a learning curve here tonight, Mr. Smither, that's not true. I talked to the executive director. She shared with me, they only provide what they call rapid housing. They have a regional grant. And by the way, we're not a signature to that MOU. But they'll still serve our clients. But they're not providing any services. They're not coming here and doing the other things in Palatine County. It's not happening. And by the way, their case manager can't remember the last time they provided housing rental assistance to somebody from Palatine County. And that's from their executive director. So once again, you know, we got a problem that needs to be fixed ASAP. I would like for you to update the board with what it is that we're going to do, whether or not we're going to create the program in a lot of localities. I'm understanding from the executive director over in Hanover, she shared with me, she said, a lot of the times, she said, "It's not done through the social services department. It's done through a nonprofit that's working with the social services department, like over in Goochlin Cares." Now, I believe at one time in this county, the board was funding or providing funding for the program. I think that goes back to, you know, 2018 or before. I seem to remember something, but something has happened because we're not doing it anymore. It went away, yet we had the information up on the county website. And of course, people were being pointed in the direction of Goochlin. So that needs to be fixed. I'd like for you to come back to the board, give us an update. And once again, I'm requesting And once again, I'm requesting here up on stage as part of our monthly meetings to be able to get information from social services about their service delivery programs and how well we're doing and any issues that they're running into. Again, this is under our tent. We should have been getting this all along. That's the way it's done in every other locality. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Cox. Mr. Smith, when you're looking into this, one of the things you could do that would be helpful is we made a significant, I think it was six bodies, investment in social services not too long ago. And so as you're looking at this and finding it out, what, what, what has that done, done for us? Okay, I mean, we threw a lot, we threw a lot of dollars at that. And have we got, have we gotten a return on it? That, that's, knowing, knowing we put so many people there, I, I'd really like to understand how that, how that's worked out. Thank you.
We can get that. Mr. Williams, I guess we're through that section.
Yes.
I said, public hearings is next on the agenda.
Public hearings. A.
Case twenty-two dash zero three R Z Sherman Holmes. This case has been deferred to October twenty-four, two thousand twenty-two.
Let's defer. To the next one.
Orders to twenty twenty-two dash thirty-three A and thirty-three B. The county of Powhatan requests an amendment of the provision set forth in county ordinance eighty sixty-seven. Water meters for outside use. I think the board asked last month if Mr. Melas could bring back two alternatives for you to look at. Mr. Melas is here tonight for that purpose.
Yep. Good evening, board. Tonight, we have public hearing for your consideration. Ordinance zero two zero two-two dash thirty-three A or zero dash two zero two-two dash thirty-three B. Mend in the county code of ordinances, section eighty dash sixty-seven water meters for outside use. This item was introduced to the board at your August sixteenth workshop where I presented the concept to you. These draft ordinances will allow for Aqua Virginia Water customers who are Powhatan County sewer customers to receive financial relief on their sewer bills for water they are using for lawn irrigation. This is, is water not entering the sanitary sewer system? Therefore, this water is not being treated at our wastewater treatment plant, so no cost is being incurred by the county. Concept of winter average versus metered usage was discussed at the workshop and the board tasked staff with preparing ordinances for both conditions. For both options, the customer would be required to apply and pay one-time twenty-five dollar administrative fee to modify the account to receive a once a year credit that would be applied to their December sewer bill. Ordinance option A utilizes a winter average method using the customer's December and January water usage capped at one hundred and twenty-five percent to determine their credit for their June, August and October bill. I calculated credits using this method for several customers that I know are irrigation customers on our sewer system and their average credit was roughly five hundred and fifty-six dollars. Ordinance option B requires the customer to purchase a water meter from Public Works, have the meter installed on their irrigation system by a contractor at the customer's expense to determine the amount of water that is irrigated. Water meter would be read once a year and measured quantity would be used to determine the credit. The customer is due. The customer would be responsible for all replacement costs of any damaged or malfunctioning meters. At the workshop, the board also asked for an installation cost of an irrigation water meter and I reached out to several irrigation contractors to inquire about these costs. I received ranges between eight hundred and twenty-five hundred dollars. Comments I received from the contractors were that the costs were dependent upon how the irrigation system was plumbed to the customer service line and where the physical connections were made. Also reached out to five neighboring localities and see what others were doing for irrigation relief for their customers. Chestfield and New Kent are using a metered approach while Goochlin, Hanover and Henreich are using a winter average method similar to what I proposed in draft ordinance A. Board chooses to proceed, they would choose either ordinance option A, winter average or option B, metered usage. And I stand ready to answer any questions you may have.
Any comments or questions, board?
We need a public hearing.
We'll open the floor up to the public. Not seeing anyone coming down. Is anyone on Zoom, Mr. Smither?
Zoom is clear, Mr. Chairman.
We'll close the public hearing. Board, comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Does Mr. Melas have a preference?
I am actually leaning towards option A, both, either one would work. Option B is obviously more costly to a customer initially.
Okay.
And may present some other challenges if, with them having an additional meter in their yard, potential of it being damaged, that's the thing.
So you prefer A?
Prefer A.
And A is average.
That's correct.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, you can.
I move we approve ordinance zero two, two, sorry, O dash two zero two-two thirty-three A.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Smither.
Mr. Williams.
Commentary? Go ahead and roll call.
Mr. Williams.
All right.
Mr. McClung.
Hi.
Mr. Cox. Ms. Carmack.
Hi.
Mr. Barley.
Hi. Motion passes.
Next, Mr. Chairman, is ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-four. County Powhatan is concerned the adoption of an ordinance to exempt equipment and machinery used for forest harvesting and civil, civil cultural activities from personal property taxes. This item has a very small impact on our county financials. I think right now there's one taxpayer that would receive an exemption. Other people could bring new equipment into the county that might qualify it. But at this point, it's at seventeen thousand dollars. Discussion with an opportunity if we put the exemption in to possibly attract more, other qualifying equipment that's taxable and non-taxable.
All right.
I think we have to have the public hearing.
We'll open up the floor for the public.
Mr. Chairman and honorable members of the board of Powhatan County, I'm Ron Jenkins with Virginia Loggers Association. We represent loggers across the Commonwealth of Virginia. We would ask for your approval of oh, two, zero, two, two, dash thirty-four. And we believe it would bring several benefits to the county. First, those who would benefit now would, would be relieved from certain challenges that we're facing in this industry now. With, for instance, there are several mills right now just shut down for preventive maintenance which prevents many of our members from actually making deliveries. So it does create hardships along with the double-digit increases in prices that we're all facing. But also, we think it's an investment for the county. The forest resources will be healthy. Those who are in this position of this type of industry will be of, will be able to, when the re-market provides the opportunities to expand, build more workforce, buy new equipment. And certainly, the counties will benefit by those that are, the equipment that is titled and that will be a benefit to all. And I would just say, and the last benefit, I think, would be the future generations who will have healthy forests. Those who own land will continue to, to manage and sustain sustainable forest land. I hope that you will vote in favor and thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir.
Chairman, board members, Kenneth Hatcher, thirty-six seventeen, Trail Road. I ask you to like to vote in favor of this. I see timber harvesters like agricultural harvesters in county and equipment they have. And I believe you'll be in line with fairness in this particular situation. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to make a comment? Does anyone on Zoom, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, Zoom is clear.
Board members' comments?
Like to make a motion. I move that we approve ordinance O dash two zero two-two dash three four.
Second.
Roll call back, Mr. Smith.
All right.
Mr. Williams, aye, Mr. McClung.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
I'm.
Ms. Carmack.
I'm.
Mr. Barley.
Aye.
Our last item tonight is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-five, case twenty-two dash zero nine dash AZ. The Frank, Mr. Frank Hopkins of our planning department will present this case.
Evening, board. As you recall, we needed a ordinance amendment to attach to our future land use for economic opportunity. That's what you have for today. This amendment is kind of broken down into two sections. It's the rules for what would go in the district and kind of what the rules are for the master plan that someone's going to supply here for an application. So as far as what's going on in the actual district, we've kept the density at four units a dwelling acre west of two eighty-eight. And out of planning commission arrived an amendment for, in the east special area, seven eleven at up to nine units an acre, which is in line with the comp plan. I had originally crafted this at nine and basically the board could have some flexibility in utilizing it where it's supplied based on the comp plan. As someone who's existed with ordinances that have existed well past comp plans, that's kind of how I've seen ordinance's function before. Planning commission did not like that, so I've included their direct amendment into this item and that's what you have before you today. The second amendment that they added to this, which I do think needs some amount of fixing and I have a proposal if you'd like it or have, if you have ideas. They wanted to have thirty percent of the commercial development be developed before the residential occupancy occurred or anything happens in this district. The only issue we have with is the language that was used in it. Wouldn't specify what that commercial development area meant. Were they talking about the square footage? Were they talking about the land area? That wasn't really specified in that amendment. I've come up with some draft language posted tonight in that that number one, this match plan has a phasing to it. So one question I have kind of openly is, is all the commercials supposed to come in? Thirty percent of the entire commercial come in for the residential or should it be based on the phase? Should every thirty percent come in? And so I've had it in a moment here, potentially could fix that. I think on some level, I think this probably needs to get reworked a little bit or could be pushed out, but or it could go on tonight. I'm sorry, I've lost my train of thought. Do you have any questions about it?
Does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, do you want the questions now that we're going to get into the issues, some of the issues that he's raised?
Let's let the public comment.
That's where I'm going.
Okay.
That's where I was going.
We'll open the floor for the public comment or public hearing.
Good evening, Elaine Hall, seventeen forty-six Old Powhatan Estates. Sort of confused by this rewriting of this development plan. Page ninety-eight of the twenty twenty-one comprehensive plan, economic development is defined as variety of commercial and light industrial uses should be accommodated in economic opportunity areas. Following mix of uses is preferred, commercial office and light industrial uses seventy to a hundred percent of project area and residential uses up to thirty percent of project area. In this new zoning ordinance, I don't see any such designation. It merely states that at least thirty percent of the commercial development must be developed before residential occupancy occurs. Not sure if this is an error or is this the intended plan? Forgive my skepticism, I've lost some faith with planning commission. No offense to anyone personally, but we still don't have an accurate current land use application map, which is an incredibly useful tool. However, hasn't been updated in a year. I've attended three neighborhood meetings this summer that were held outside when it was in the high nineties with a threat of thunderstorms. One of the meetings had to be held a second time because no one from the planning commission showed up first time. I've attended several planning commission meetings for a particular rezoning. Matter of fact, the next one's next week. Hopefully it'll go through, but it keeps getting deferred due to errors made by the planning department. So there seems to be a lot of mismanagement in so many areas of our county. And I am pleading with you guys, we've got to get it together. You've got to fix the mistakes. If people cannot do their jobs, then maybe they don't deserve to have these jobs. There needs to be some accountability and there just doesn't seem to be any. So I apologize if I digress, but do you have a question regarding that thirty percent?
Steve, around thirty-four ninety-two, Richardson, Powhatan, Virginia. Oh. I'm sorry, maybe because I'm about half asleep, but that was about as clear as mud to me of what's, we're trying to do here. Oh, we're trying to, and hope I'm totally in left field, trying to increase it from four units to nine units. Oh, God help us. Everybody's sitting up on that board except for Ms. McClung, he wasn't there that last election was held was, no, we're not going to do that. So for that special area, east of two eighty-eight. Oh. I beg y'all, please don't take us down that road. People in Powhatan County don't want it, I don't care if it's the retirement community or what it is. They don't want this high-density development. And I keep hearing a lot of talk about the Ellis property, the Ellis property. You're talking about creating a nightmare coming into this county. I'll say again, is all the apartments you want high-density living, you want two miles east of the county line. So please hold to what y'all said when y'all ran that y'all were not going to support this kind of stuff. So thank you about what you ran on, thank you about what you told the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Do you have anybody on Zoom, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. We do, we have two on Zoom. Ms. Debbie Weir, you're on mute. If you don't mind going first, we'll take it off mute, we'll be ready. Ms. Weir, you're still on mute. Okay, now we're ready.
Okay. Good evening, members of the board of supervisors. My name is Debbie Weir, I live at fifteen, fifteen oh one Page Road. I understand that this district needs to give landowners and developers flexibility. However, it also needs to spell out additional points in greater detail that the board of supervisors have indicated in their discussions and are in the current approved comprehensive plan. Up to thirty percent of the land in economic opportunity areas are to be designated for residential development. The residential density is mentioned in the district description, but not the percentage of the parcel or parcels that can be developed for residential use as indicated in the comprehensive plan. The comp plan states up to thirty percent residential development and up to seventy percent commercial, light, industrial. There's also the minimum of fifteen percent open space requirement in there too. However, none of these specifics are spelled out in this PDD zoning district proposal. If you do not spell out the specifics, landowners and developers will take advantage of the gray areas in this district. Please consider amending, rewriting this document to include more defined specifics. Since PDD districts will generate a high impact to the transportation infrastructure within the county, the transportation plan needs to be addressed clearly, especially in the development of this district. The developers should know that they bear a good portion of the cost in improving the transportation infrastructure in the portion of the county that they are impacting. There needs to be verbiage that indicates that the transportation infrastructure outside the PDD needs to be phased in before the work within the PDD starts. The type of proffers the landlord and developer need to provide in their detailed development plan should also be included in the details of this district. This will ensure that the development is not a detriment, but actually an asset to the county. With this being a brand-new future use that the twenty twenty-one comp plan created, please make amendments or rewrite the zoning district to make the PDD zoning district fit the goals and the defined uses outlined in the comprehensive plan. There is not enough detail for this mixed-use PDD zoning district. And this zoning district needs to be much better and this zoning district needs to be much better defined rather than being so vague. The PDD zoning district verbiage needs more work before you vote on it. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Mr. Chair, the other caller is, is dropped, so we're clear on Zoom.
All right. Close the public hearing. Board members.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Oh, if the board would turn to pages ninety-five and ninety-six, I'm gonna go through this quickly, but I'm going to suggest at the end of this, because of what's missing, uh, that we defer this. Okay, so I'm gonna go through it rather quickly. Uh, first, if you go to, if you look on page ninety-six, and you look up top, the development phasing plan, that was replaced over on ninety-five by number ten. Planning commission came in and said, this is what we want, so you can get rid of that. There will be a phasing plan. Uh, two, we are missing from the comprehensive plan. This is supposed to mirror the comprehensive plan, correct? No, 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 no. There's no, there's none of this crap, okay? It's supposed, this is, we beat this thing up, and this lady and I went at it tooth and nail, okay? And we got it clear, okay? It's not for you to change, okay? What's missing is the appropriate uses on residential or single-family detached and townhomes, okay, and multifamily only in the seven eleven district. Not all of the permitted residential uses you have on here. It needs to reflect that. The following mix is preferred, commercial seventy to a hundred percent residential, up to thirty percent. Does not apply, the thirty percent restriction on residential doesn't apply in seven eleven. That's not in here. Industrial uses should be permitted, provided operations are conducted within a building and generate little or no off-site nuances, nu- 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 nuances, okay? Noise, dust, light. That's what it says about that. What you've got in uses here, if you will go on page ninety-five and go up and look at permitted commercial industrial, that's right underneath the permitted residential uses. He's got planned, okay, can have anything in Commerce Center, anything in Light Industrial, anything not listed in those two are allowed by conditional use permit, so anything possible. Both of our planned developments today have uses listed and accessory uses listed. We need uses listed, okay? The other thing that's missing is Mr. Pompey, uh, at the board's request, uh, in, uh, July of twenty twenty, said the planned development is not working properly because we're giving these people flexibility, and for things like open spaces, they're giving us the minimum standard. And so Mr. Pompey came up with a scheme that allowed us, said, look, he gave him, he gave him a list, uh, that said, uh, we want to see at least two, and you're going to use planned development, we want to see some enhancements. We want to see some more trails, we want to see some more, uh, uh, open spaces, and so that should be incorporated in. And so we need to bring this thing up to standards with our comprehensive plan. We need to look at what Mr. Pompey brought forward that makes it a better place, uh, and we need to have uses. Uh, the other thing I think we need, which is an issue you raised, uh, Mr. Hopkins, which is a legitimate one, uh, that deals with the phasing development, okay? How do we measure that? And you, you said, well, that's a problem. You, you said, that's a problem. Well, how about a solution? Okay, I'd like a solution. That's all. So I'd like, I'd like to defer this thing and see if we can't get a much more comprehensive uh, ordinance that deals with all of these issues. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox. Mr. Williams?
I didn't have my hand up, but that's okay. I, I appreciate your willingness to recognize me. Um, Frank, I'm going to echo a lot, if not everything, that that gentleman just said. I don't know why in the world we can't take the description that's in the comprehensive plan we talked about in the workshop. Mr. Cox was right, there were discussions with Mrs. Carmack, Mr. Barley, myself, where we went back and forth on this. But we agreed to what was in this land use description for economic opportunity. There was agreement. Now, going back to your thing, well, I thought you'd give you more flexibility. That's not your option, okay? And when you say giving people more flexibility, when you're talking about units per acre, and you're going from nine, excuse me, from four units per acre to nine, that's a big deal. And the development community, that's huge. If we're talking about Page Road, and it gets even bigger. So I don't know what's complicated. You don't make the decisions on the comprehensive plan. That gets adopted by the Board of Supervisors. We adopted this. Now, I don't need hand signals right now, but I need to, for you to listen. We have gone through this before. I've talked to Brett. This thing came forward first time with VCPD. I talked to Brett. Mrs. Carmack was in Florida at that time. We deferred it to September to this meeting. We were going to take this description with the board had agreed to. All of us. This is, this is what we agreed to at that workshop, and now we're here debating things again. Now, what I'm looking for is for staff to come back and develop the zoning ordinance that reflects what is in the comprehensive plan. Now, I don't see any mention of the seventy thirty. The only thing I see that you presented us with is about thirty percent of the residential, excuse me, the commercial having to be done before you get to the residential. Why? Why can't we take what we've agreed to, the description right here, that everybody can read, and translate that into a zoning ordinance that says what we agreed to in the comprehensive plan? Now, going back to your issue about, well, the planning commission said, well, you gotta do thirty percent commercial, and how do you measure that? I agree. But if you're going to come here tonight, and you're going to start throwing out options at the board meeting with the public hearing, where I'm getting ready to vote on something, I'm not doing it. I'm not doing it because this should have been scrubbed before it ever got to the board. That's why we have a planning commission. The planning commission makes sure that by the time something gets to us, because I've served on the planning commission, so has Mrs. Carmack. We know what our job was, and that was to give a good application to the Board of Supervisors where issues have been addressed. And then was up to the Board of Supervisors to vote on. If you're leaving this understanding, and you're coming here tonight, and you're saying, well, now, I've got some ideas, I don't want to hear them. Because right now, I'm not going to make a decision up here on stage at ten minutes to eleven after the meeting we've had about how are we going to do this? That should have already been discussed at the planning commission, and then, at the very least, your options should have been presented to us in emails and staff report with the pros and cons and what you recommended. But I'm going back to something Ms. Hall said. You know, this can't keep going on. Now, we're open for economic development in this county. If you want to kill economic development, do what you've done down on Page Road. Now that gentleman's having to go three times. And the reason is not because of the planning commission, it's because of staff getting it right. And going back to what Ms. Hall said again, asking people to come to a community meeting where the, you're not even there? None of your staff is there? And you're going to hold it out front on an oak tree at ninety-five degrees? Oh, and if it does rain, are you going to be standing out there in a raincoat directing people to go to wherever? How can you be open for business and do this? Now, the business community, they want to know is, what are the rules? If I meet the rules, I'll be approved, and time is money. We're not doing any of those things. Now, with the kind of staff work that we're getting here month after month. If I'm upset, it's because I am upset. It just keeps going. If you go back and look at it, it means I've had to call Brett Sharnine up here most of the time to get my questions answered. Something has to change. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anyone else? Is there a motion?
I say I move we defer case O dash two zero two-two dash three five to, uh, would a month be enough, our October meeting?
Second.
I, I would like a little bit of direction on some level, and here's, here's my question. Much of the criticism was just levied, levied to me, kind of breaks down to how much discretion do you want in this item? Do you want this item completely in line with the comprehensive plan? So it's a hundred percent thirty and seventy, it's a hundred percent four units dwelling in it west two eighty-eight, and nine units dwelling acre east of two eighty-eight. Do you want it exactly like that is? Or do you want someone to be able to come and give you an application that may deviate from those some amount? And you have some possibility, some discretion to go on something other than that? And that is my general question as to what you'd like me to bring you next month, because those are kind of the open questions I have. The, the item as is right now has lines in it that say it should be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So there isn't that much wiggle room that somebody could do outside of that, but as it is currently constituted, um, it's kind of in the middle. And so I have some criticism here saying you need to have this exactly the comprehensive plan, and also that we're open for business, and we need to have some level of uh, ability to have different types of applications. So I would need some direction as to what exactly you want, exactly the comprehensive plan or some amount of freedom to make discretion outside of that.
Mr. Chairman. Go ahead, Mr. Cox. Why do you even ask that question?
It's a valid question.
No, well, no, what, no. We ask you, we spend a lot of time on a comprehensive plan, okay?
Right.
And you want to discard it?
No.
Yeah, okay, no, you just said, I, you know, I don't want these restrictions. I'm, okay, you, you, listen to me, please. You're asking, okay, to answer your question. I'm trying to, okay? This area in particularly had disagreements. We hammered it out, and we hammered it out, and we didn't necessarily agree with each other, but that's what it says. What I expect you to do is, you're not in, from, from my standpoint, you're not in the interpretive business, Mr., okay? You're in the business of making sure our comprehensive plan is followed. Okay, that's why we have a comprehensive plan. We don't have a comprehensive plan so that we can change it daily. Uh, and if it's going to be changed, it's changed by this board. So I want to see the comprehensive plan followed. Yes.
One hundred percent.
Why would, Frank, how many times do I have to say the same thing? Yes, one hundred percent.
Okay. Well, is that the feeling of the entire board, or is that just a feeling of Mr. Cox, Mr. Williams? So I think that's the question Mr. Mr. Hopkins is asking. Well, hold on. Okay, if I'm, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
If I'm a there's certain things that are cornerstones or capstones to any land use designation that has to have applicable zoning ordinance to go with it. The capstones in this, it's very clear. The capstones were the densities, where we said we wanted, what kind of densities, what the housing looked like, you know, on Route sixty versus seven eleven east of two eighty-eight. We had different densities. Okay, we talked about the seventy thirty ratio. I can remember the conversation. Mrs. Carmack, Mike, Mr. Barley, all of us, we were in the conversation, and we had a good discussion about the differences between seven eleven west of two eighty-eight and what on Route sixty. Okay, because I had to go back and repair because I didn't want what we had originally agreed to. We had a discussion in the workshop that day that the comprehensive plan isn't something you put up on the shelf. And yes, being as we were discussing the comprehensive plan, and it is a business plan for the county that we could go back and talk about. We had those discussions. And we, again, agreed. Now, the capstones, again, west of two eighty-eight on seven eleven, and then Route sixty east. What were we going to do with the seventy thirty? And what were we going to do with densities? And what did the housing look like? Now, those are, those are the cornerstone's work with. Now, if you want to go in, and now you want to change and say, well, leave it open to give you more flexibility, then you can throw away, you know, everything that we've done, you know, with the comprehensive plan. Because you now are giving the development community, and you're saying you have the option by listing these range of densities, you're giving them, and what kind of message are you sending them? When we voted and we said there was going to be four units per acre on Route sixty versus you could do nine west of two eighty-eight on seven eleven. So they want good direction. Now, I don't know how much clearer you can get on that. When you say want to follow the plan, that is the plan, okay? That's why we have land use designations. That's my comments.
So the motion on the floor is to defer it to next month?
I'll second that motion.
That would be, um, October twenty-fourth, maybe? Sound right?
The next October regular Board of Supervisor meeting.
October twenty-fourth. I know it's late, but we're going to take our time, trust me.
Mr. Chairman.
We're going to go to the twenty-fourth of October for that to be deferred. Okay, yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Um, one last idea I'd like Mr. Hopkins to think about. Structurally, our ordinances are there to support and bring to life what is in the comprehensive plan. They follow the comprehensive plan. They don't change the comprehensive plan. That's what they do, okay? That's the structure. You'll find that in your little zoning manual. It says this is what it's supposed to do, so.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Cox. Do a roll call on the deferment.
Mr. Williams. All right, Mr. McClung.
Hi.
Mr. Cox.
I'm.
Ms. Carmack.
I.
Mr. Barley.
I. Yep, this is number thirteen, which would be the minutes of the August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two regular meeting. Mr. Williams asked to be taken off of the consent agenda.
Just one moment, Mr. Chairman.
Take your time. We have all night.
So you know, I'm going to where what page? At the discussion where I made the motion um, for the um, assessment by the county manager, or excuse me, county attorney and HR manager. Where was that? I'm sorry, I didn't have a mark. Oh, here it is.
Change thirtyish.
Thirty-one.
Is it, no, I think it's page nineteen as well. Which you're not, you're not on the right.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Thirty or thirty-one, probably.
It's thirty-one, I believe. You're in the wrong minutes.
This happened.
Yes.
Thirty, looks like. Okay, you, you're saying it's, uh, Mrs. Carmack?
The discussion.
Yes. Look, yes, I'm sorry. There there's there's a motion there and it's also a motion where I made. This is where I made the formal motion, but in the discussion. Also made the motion. And the motion is not complete. The motion should say, in light of the salary increases and. Adjustments that were made to the different levels or whatever, that's missing. And that sets the tone for the, that's part of the motion. That's not there.
I don't see that. Where are you?
Where where are you, Mr. Williams? I can't find where.
There's a motion on page thirty one.
Mr. Williams made a motion.
Okay. It's about, Mr. Williams made a motion, the Human Resources Manager and County Attorney. Here it is, page twenty eight.
Page thirty one or page twenty eight?
Go back to twenty eight and I'll get back to thirty one. This Williams at the bottom of the page, discussion of county classification compensation plan. Mr. Williams made a motion to have the Human Resources Manager and County assess the integrity. The motion was, given the salary increases and the pay love, the pay grade changes. That part is missing.
We can check that and re re rework it. Bottom of page twenty eight, number, letter B.
Yeah. That's what I'm asking.
Review that and come back to you.
Right, and then. Full motion on page thirty one, thirty one.
I have an item on this also.
So what's wrong with the full motion on page thirty one?
There's a motion. This Williams made a motion to have the Human Resource Manager assess the integrity.
You want to, is it the same thing there?
Yeah.
That you're talking about. So really what it is, is the motion that's actually on page forty seven in Mr. Latchney's memorandum. He says, in light of the salary increases and regrades that were authorized by the county administrator over the previous year. Is that your point? That needs to be on there, that sentence?
That's it.
Okay. All right, Mr. Cox.
I'll go to page twenty nine. The end of the first paragraph. It's talking, Mr. McClung, agree that vote had been taken on Deputy County Administrator's salary in April. Also agree the numbers need to be updated. What is missing there is Mr. Cox provided minutes from the April meeting and it showed that there was no approval for job or salary.
Say this again, where where are you? I see the first paragraph.
Twenty nine, first paragraph, the bottom of the first paragraph, the last sentence of the first paragraph, Mr. McClung agreed that a vote had been taken.
On the Deputy County Administrator's salary.
So finish that sentence. That's, there's nothing wrong with that sentence. Okay? Mr. Cox provided minutes from the April meeting and it showed no approval for the job or salary.
Make sure that's it there.
We'll confirm, Mr. Chairman. They held up the minutes.
All right. Those the only two amendments to the to the minutes?
Well, I have, sir.
Okay. Is that all, Miss Williams, for you?
That's it.
Okay, now we go to.
Let's go.
They've gone all, oh, here it is. I'm okay. What is that?
Oh, no, that's that's for you. You need that.
I don't need that.
Okay.
I need I need to look at it ahead of time, not at the last minute.
It's not at the last minute.
Right now is. Our resolution R twenty 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 two dash twenty eight, is that the one you're going to, Mr. Cox?
Yes.
All right.
What I provided you with was in last April, excuse me, last October. We had an Esso grant also, and we deferred that. And what I showed you was what Mr. Smith provided us because of the information that we were looking for. It showed how the schools are actually going to use the money. So what I would like to see is before we throw a million dollars over the fence, some idea how they're going to spend it. This is what we did last time. Okay, and it answered the questions. Mr. Schubert, do you understand the question? Thank you.
You got.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to find out how that's to be distributed.
Probably bring it back, back to you and.
October twenty four.
October twenty four.
All right, is that Mr. Cox?
Yes.
The next is resolution R twenty twenty two dash twenty nine, remaining in the fiscal year twenty twenty three. Palatane County Operating Budget, Mr. Cox.
Yes, if you look on page thirty seven, in the summary of the item. It says there are several, I have problems with the what they what they're trying to do, but it says there's several completed projects and utilities capital projects fund. That will use to cover what is needed for the additional cost of the current project. I would like to better understand where the money is coming from, why it's there. Not just a a simple, that's all I'm interested in is. Help me understand the utilities fund, what money we're using and where is it coming from? So you would like it to refer to the, on the next page, we do have a breakdown of projects. You want us to put that description into the. No, 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 I wanted to understand where the money was coming from. It said it sits in the utilities fund. Okay, and so what else is in the utilities fund? Just where's it coming from? Mr. Schubert, please help.
So we have a utilities capital projects fund, so I probably should have worded it that way. During the CIP project process, there are certain projects that are utility based. So those monies are transferred from either the capital maintenance reserve or these are not bonded money. So this is capital maintenance reserve money that was moved into the capital, utility capital projects fund for them to do those projects. And so these projects have are finished and have a balance remaining.
Don't, what what do we do with our hookup, okay, and equipment? Don't, isn't that supposed to go into that fund?
It does go into that fund, but it currently that money ends up supporting our actual utilities fund.
You wrote, do you know in round numbers, how many dollars we have in the utility fund?
That regular utility fund or utility capital projects fund?
The one you're using to pay this with.
Oh, uh, I might have to get that information for you. I can't think off the top. You mean from connection fees or just in general?
No, this just said the utilities capital projects fund, the money's there and it'll be used to cover these additional costs. I'm just trying to figure out what's in that fund, so.
Well, I mean, the three projects listed are the three projects that are in that fund and those are the remaining funds left. So I don't know if I apologize. I don't understand your question.
Could we, could we do this? It sounds like the money's in the, Ms. Schubert and I, she will help me understand. And we will go ahead with this and for tonight. She and I'll have a conversation. She'll tell me what's what it is. And we'll and we'll go home. Well, we'll go home in a little while.
Resolutions. Yeah, we'll go home in a little while.
I'm gonna hurry either.
The.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question also.
Yes, oh, awesome, go ahead.
You said something just now that rung a bell. Because not that many years ago, we had a discussion. About hookup fees going not to fund projects. They were going, we were using them kind of as pay, pay as you go. Is that correct? Is that, is that what we're doing there? It's not.
Utilities capital projects?
I thought, you know, other localities took the hookup fees and they put them into a special account or fund. To pay for future utilities.
That is correct. And this was back under Mr. Voorhees when we we connection fees prior to probably two or three years, I guess, three years ago. Always went into our main utility fund. Then we decided we would try to start putting it into the utility capital projects to build up. Funds in order to hopefully one day be able to pay, but unfortunately our utility fund is not self-supporting.
So we're using the hookup fees to bring down the cost of our subsidy for water and sewer.
Yes, sir. Currently not. I will say there has been some, we only transfer what we budget. And so there is some remaining connection fees in that fund that. That hopefully will build up to be able to pay. I guess I envisioned it being larger projects than this, but. These were existing projects in there before we even started doing that.
Sure, I'm not going to get into this discussion tonight because this is not the appropriate time. But I do want to have this for a discussion or a workshop. And I also want to know, for example, how much do we collect in connection fees down at Founders Bridge, et cetera? So I want to know how much we're putting in to offset water and sewer costs in Palatane County.
How much is our debt in that that we're subsidizing the water and sewer in Palatane County?
The debt of the officer.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Want to say.
The taxpayers subsidize it every year. How much is that?
It's around anywhere between, I'd have to go back and look at, because it is coming down, but it's still around like one point three million dollars a year.
So that we're upside down, one point three million?
Yes, sir.
We got fifteen more years to pay on that?
Yes, around twenty, I think it was around twenty thirty four, it dropped significantly. I, but then we have, but but twenty thirty eight is when it's all, should all be paid.
All right, thank you. You got, Mr. Williams wants a workshop on that.
Oh, yes, sir.
All right. Uh, public comment time. We'll open the floor for public comment.
Kenneth Hatcher, thirty six seventeen, Trenton Road, Mr. Chairman, other members of the board. Just a couple of observations. I don't know what happened to the closed session on how personnel matters. It's a whole different dynamics between handling that in a private way and out in the public. What's said, what's not said, and the freedom that you have with one another in that kind of situation. And it's a very fair way to do it. As far as the attorney's report here tonight, I was surprised when I heard he was going to do it. But I thought he was because you all respected his opinion. Where that goes forward from tonight and the report he gave and they asked to do something different because of the way it came out. And even his advice of appealing it to the Attorney General, I thought when I was said, Attorney General was going to probably laugh and that's what the county attorney said. And the idea of searching for a person of dismissal, it has to be something of a criminal intent. Uh, and if you don't find that, that means, you know, everything's okay. I don't think that's the bar. And then education on the state compensation board. Constitutional officers and employees of constitutional officers can get raises. That's determined by the state compensation board. That money is sent out here and the county administrator or somebody's supposed to see that they get that money. So the fact that they got a raise doesn't mean that the county gave them that raise. That raise came from the state. And that's exclusive of any kind of two percent or five percent generosity that that goes with people. Maybe you know all of us, but I'm just sharing what I've reached about it. And it's very important to understand about the function because the county, you as a board, county administrator has no say so over the constitutional office. All the employees that work there, they can adopt the handbook for the county, but they don't have to. The state has a plan and and the state will apply it to their vacation time off and so forth. So. And then the other thing, uh, you know, the way business is being conducted in Palatane Board of Supervisors. I understand everybody else that sees that idea. This is nothing but groupthink and tribalism. And individuals need to to find out for themselves the information. Uh, and determine for themselves individually how they want to vote. And I don't see that happening. I don't think the public guy sees that happen. You have that obligation to do that. And if somewhere we could find a swing voter, that would be the person, that would be the person who would change the dynamic to this board. I hope we can find a swing voter up there. Thank you for your consideration tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Bobby Gray, three five zero eight, Sherwood, Love Place. Um, I just wanted to state, well, first, thank you for all the information that you provided, which is very helpful. Uh, however, I would have liked to have heard from my supervisor, number three, on why he voted the way he did, but which y'all didn't allow him to do. Uh, which I think needs to be addressed for future because there was a. Chairs were allowed in the past to speak and now all of a sudden they can't. I understand Robert's rules. I've dealt with it before. However, it needs to be addressed because personally, as a voter, I want to know what he has to say so because it could change my mind down the road as well, who I vote for. The other thing is, you know, y'all bringing issues to light with Mr. Smithers, which is good. I have other questions on how's it going to, how are y'all going to prevent it from happening down the road? And why wasn't it brought to y'all, his attention several years ago? I'm not blaming HR. HR, though, is supposed to know everything about that book backwards and forwards more than him. But why did they not report to you? Are they afraid to you? Or some miscommunication or there's no checks and bounces in the system? Something needs to be done with that. On top of whatever y'all decide down the road with Mr. Smithers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Steven Barrow, thirty four ninety two, Richards Run, Palatane, Virginia. Oh, going back to the temporary event permit thing, just take me out of the question, you know, out of the equation. Uh, my biggest concerns for people down the road. This stuff is saying an application is incomplete because the county hasn't signed it. That's just a cop out. You have fifteen days to respond. I could respond two months later to the date. And say, I don't have an appeal. I think the county attorney wasn't giving all the information. I think if I may be wrong, I may be speaking out of turn. I think if he'd have known that the. Festival of the Great, which I have nothing against, in fact, I'm going to be in it this year. But they had the same, you can smile all you want, Mr. Smithers. But they had the same application I turned in, but theirs is okay. Mine's not. And why is that? I think I know why. That's obvious. That'll be dealt with eventually. That's right. Let's get another smile. I love it. Another question I do have is, back earlier this year, we had a group come up here from Richmond. Had a march, we shut down the county administration building, we shut down the courts. We shut down, I think, the library and everything. Did they have a temporary event permit? I like to have an answer to that, and that is a question. For this board and the county administrator, did they have a permit to do what they did? It caused a whole lot more disruption, a whole lot more cost to this county than I would have. And I live here. I pay for this. Services supposedly. But, you know, it's obviously. There's something going on. Some people call discrimination. And it can be discriminated against people like me, too. So please think about what you're doing, and I will say again, thank you, Mr. Cox. Thank you, Mr. Williams, for voting the way you did. The other three. It's saying, it makes everybody wonder what this man may know or may have over y'all. God help us. Y'all have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone on Zoom, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir, we do. Uh, let's go with the ASAP family, Mike and Leslie ASAP, please, uh, you, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Mike ASAP. I live at three six seven three Old Buckingham Road. In Palatane, I appreciate the opportunity to speak before the board. I want to first of all, thank Mr. Williams for his discussion of the social services needs of Palatane citizens. Where they have to go to the Goochland Cares to receive a level of service that we in Palatane. Should strive to provide for our citizens. So I want to thank Mr. Williams for his advocacy on that behalf. As a career special educator and mental health, working with mental health services. I really see the need for expanded services in Palatane. Secondly, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Cox for his nomination of Linda Revelles to the Community Services Board. She will provide Palatane with full representation on the Community Services Board. As we strive to provide mental health services, services for students with intellectual disabilities. And those with substance abuse and alcohol issues. Uh, thirdly, I want to provide comment regarding our county administrator. The discussion that has gone so far, in addition to the review of this, the memorandum from our county attorney. Indicate that the board is justified in its questioning of the competence and the continuation of. and the continuation of his contract of our, of our county administrator based upon his person, actions with unilateral actions, actions with regard to personnel that do not have board approval. And so I just wanted to lay that out as a concern as a private citizen in Powhatan that the board has justified, and that the need for an attorney general opinion on this matter is not warranted in this fashion because the board can clearly determine from the evidence provided by our county attorney that the county administrator has not followed approval of the board of supervisors in personnel and grade actions with regard to personnel. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide comment and appreciate the board of supervisors' work in all these matters. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. April Rogers is on Zoom. Ms. Rogers, if you could go forward, please.
Good evening. My name is April Rogers. I reside at 1490 Greenberry Road in Powhatan, Virginia, District One. First, I would like to say thank you to the board of supervisors tonight. I know that it is late, and I will try and keep it as short as possible. Anyone who knows me knows I love to talk. Mr. Cox and Mr. Williams, thank you so much for accurately representing your constituents. I have a hard time with the fact that three people that are sitting on that stage tonight did not recognize a request that was made regarding the county administrator, turned around, gave him a raise. And now we're having this discussion again. Not to mention the fact that the behavior tonight was absolutely appalling and quite frankly, embarrassing to the people of Powhatan County. Now, I'm not from Powhatan County, I chose to live here. But I tell you what, the county that I come from, this would have never stood. Everybody on that stage, every constituent would have called for your own resignations. I hope that you consider tonight a learning lesson. And going forward, we need to do better for Powhatan. Thank you and good evening.
Mr. Chairman, a third speaker on Zoom is Ms. Debbie Weir. Ms. Weir, if you could go off mute, we're ready, thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. This is Debbie Weir, 1501 Pedro. I'll keep it short. But I did have a question that I would like for y'all to consider and didn't get answered when the deputy treasurer was up there and talking about Keystone. Are we gonna get the November 5th bill out on time? You know, we are almost at the beginning of October. Usually we get the bills out within 30 days before they're due. So my question to everyone up there is, where do we stand with Keystone and the treasurer's office getting the bills out, considering they have refunds that are still pending for people and aren't being able to get those done? So, thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate everybody late night. And thanks to Mr. Williams and Mr. Cox. Please keep, keep hanging in there for us, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weir. Do you have anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, Zoom is clear.
Zoom is clear. Not seeing anyone else come down, we'll close the public. Comments, county attorney comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do have some tonight, I apologize that it's late. I've been county attorney here since June of 2013. I love this county, I live here, big taxes here, vested interest here. My son and daughter-in-law live here. My daughter and son-in-law are building here, all my grandkids are here. And I plan on retiring as county attorney here, but that's not gonna happen. County administrator would not have so aggressively attacked me if he didn't have the support of three board members. I'm convinced of that. That was further supported by the subsequent attack by one of the majority board members. Attacking me personally, attacking my impartiality, attacking my integrity. I've never been accused of any misfeasance, malfeasance here in my life. Not about to start. And I know where we are, we're shooting the messenger. I knew that was a risk when I wound up assigned this project. But I recognize tonight I received a no confidence vote by a majority of the board, by three members. I know how to recognize that. My law partner of many years, John Deal, who has gone on to be with the Lord. John used to tell me never try and take a client where they don't want to go. I've got a client, a majority of which who has a direction they want to go that I can't go. I can't go that direction. I had already made my mind up tonight that if Mr. Smith's position was not terminated, that I would be resigning. And therefore, I am letting everybody know that I am going to be tendering my resignation. I'm gonna hit the send button on the written resignation as soon as I'm done talking here. So I'll be giving my 60 days notice, my last day would be November 27th. And, uh, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Latchney. County administrator comments?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Board comments?
Right now, Mr. Chairman, I don't know whether I'm fluctuating between being madder than I think I've been in a long time and being sadder than I've been in a long time. Because while I just listened to, there's something I feared may happen. Who's next? Is it the HR manager? You know, anybody remember the McCarthy hearings going back in the 50s? He was finally checked out, when one of the people in front of him that were appearing said, Senator, have any decency? You know, he cares about this county. My family's been here forever. They're buried down at Old Church, they're buried just over the line of Skin Quarter. I love this county. That's why I do what I do. But I agree with one of the speakers that called in tonight. She said she was embarrassed. I can't tell you how embarrassed I am. We break the glass floor every meeting. And it just keeps going. And you saw it on full display here tonight. You saw all types of ploys, anything to stop the information from getting out to you. And now it's out. And what happens? We're gonna go get another opinion. We're gonna keep shopping till we can get one we like. Because the county attorney, he's right. How can you serve in this county? Now, going back to the bullying of Mr. Williams, I happened to went around to the different employees the other day. And in one department, I had the employees tell me, we can't do our job. The reason, there are no rules. You tell me an organization, you tell me a branch of the service can function with no rules. It doesn't happen. And that's where we are tonight. There are no rules. To coin the phrase that the county administrator said, just a little stale. It's an embarrassment, folks. I can't wait to get out of here tonight. I've never been more down and depressed than I am right now.
Any other comments?
I have one comment. I'm in with this, is I didn't get apology from Mr. Williams. The almighty Mr. Williams called me a piece of shit tonight, okay? He called me a piece of shit. You're talking about unprofessional, unethical, and not following rules. There is no more blatant rule violation than that. They calling one of your peers a piece of shit. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I have some. The, uh, the first thing I'll do is thank Mr. Latchney for his service to this county. He'd been here a long time, and I know that there was a, a good raise that was paid a year ago to him that he had waited eight years for. The, the memorandum and everything that came out, do you want to know where I stand? I'm gonna tell you where I stand. I looked at the motion. And the motion says, I move, we direct the HR manager and the county attorney to assess the integrity of our comp and class plan, determining how well it meets the purpose of protecting county employees and providing legal protection from the potential litigation. We got an investigation. I'm not sure I got information that satisfied me about all of that integrity part. Then the next part was, in addition, provide an updated job descriptions and an updated compensation scale. That part of the motion didn't happen. For some reason, I don't know why. But it didn't happen. I would have liked to have seen that, too. I think Mr. Cox referenced their job descriptions. And it would have been nice if they would have come out and been shared. You sit here and from my perspective, I seen personalities and not professionalism. A lot of personalities and not much professionalism. I've seen some things that would be considered facts, and then I've seen a lot of things that were opinions, interpretations. State laws violated, I think we all agreed that that was true. I think that the constitutional officers pay increases was a violation. Employee handbook violated, I think there's a lot of opinions on that. Not all agreed, but we're not all gonna agree. The process and procedures of the plan overlooked purposely and ignored. You know, we had a speaker at the end that brought up the fact that, and he's left. But he brought up the fact of a closed session. And I know Mr. Latchney wrote a memorandum on July 21st, and he clearly said in very bold print, my advice is that the matter be discussed in closed session before any public discussion is held. That was Mr. Latchney's point on July the 21st. I would agree with that. That same memorandum, after the fall elections in 2019, the county administrator was asked to resign and did so on January the 2nd, 2020. That was the previous county administrator. I suspect that subsequent updates to the plan simply, quotation marks, fell through the cracks. After that, the board of supervisors, however, did not vote to amend the previous rules, and they are still in effect. I think there's a lot of blame that can go around. I don't think it's limited to one. I think maybe we should all share in some of it. That same memorandum dated July 21st, written by Mr. Latchney. The conclusion? Nothing in the memorandum is meant to suggest that the actions taken by the county administrator were knowingly made in violation of Virginia law. Or that anyone had nefarious intentions. That story sort of changed a little bit for some reason, I don't know why. I, the HR manager, I don't have any issues. I've sat down with, with you, Melissa, and had a good conversation one day for probably over an hour. I think that there's a, an effort to do a lot of finger pointing. I think there's, that's been going on. I don't necessarily agree with all of it. I think that, I don't think, and I have, and we've read emails, and I've got an email that was written by the HR director on July the 20th, the day before Mr. Latchney's memorandum. This is what was said by the HR director. In the past, we have not made it a practice to take salary adjustments, retitles, or reclassifications to the board of supervisors. After a very quick review of such changes prior to your tenure, I found these four adjustments Ted Voorhees made. Constitutional officer in the sheriff's office, an employee in the building department, an employee who's no longer here, I don't know her, and assistant county administrator. During the previous employer or county administrator, which would have been Ms. Wyler, the finance director was promoted from her position to county manager. My point of it is, there's mistakes, there's errors. Can we do better? Yeah, we can do better. I think that, I could go on and on and on, I have many, many documents. But we made a decision, we did what we thought was right. I stand by the decision. I'm not gonna change. I have as much, uh, love and desires for this county to be successful as anybody. Anybody. I'll just leave it at that. Does anyone else want to comment now?
Mr. Chairman?
Of course.
Just one correction about closed session. Lachney also said that the report was not eligible for closed session. What he was talking about back on July 21st has nothing to do with this report. You know, he did not say, he said is not eligible for, because it has no names, okay? It does not meet the requirements for closed session. I have an email that says it. So, that's the reason we didn't have closed session. That and the fact that we didn't want to hide it from the public and it's sheer information. Take Mr. Farley as a man of his words, he's not gonna change. Consequences for that, not for me. We'll see what happens. But I'd like to see some accountability, which we're not getting. And I'm finished.
Excellent. Anyone else want to comment? Have a second bite at the apple? Okay.